I'd like to open the San Rafael City Council meeting on Monday, November eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, ask you to join us to pledge allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains our nation, our land, and our individual interests.
Thank you, sorry for being a few minutes late, and there's a reason for that, and that is we had a closed session, and I'll ask their city attorney if there's any reportable action.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action in closed session, however, I have had the city manager note me that, to me, that the council may resume the closed session after the regular meeting, so there may be another report at the outset of an extra regular meeting.
Good point, certainly, thank you very much. But I do want to read something to everyone. Before we begin, I would like to announce that item seven B, the East San Rafael Parking Study, will be interpreted from English to Spanish. The interpreter will provide some tennis translation at the beginning of seven B through the end of the item. If you experience a problem with the translation devices, please see Lindsey, and she will assist, but it'll only be offered for this particular item, that is seven B. We'll now turn to, excuse me, public expression, in which we have two cards. Public expression is an opportunity for you to address us on anything that's not on this evening's agenda, that's on your mind, you want to bring to our attention. We won't be able to take action upon it because it's not on the agenda, but nevertheless, certainly interested in your thoughts and perhaps recommendations. And I have two cards, so we'll start with the two, Buzz Johansson.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. My name is Buzz Johansson, and I've been a resident of San Rafael for the past forty years. I have two issues that I would like to address this evening. The number one condition, condition of the downtown sidewalk and concrete benches that are on the corners, and individuals taking up residence on our public sidewalks. Walking the streets of downtown has certainly opened my eyes to filthy and unsanitary condition of the sidewalks, and especially the concrete benches along Fourth Street. The trash cans leak and simply add to the stains on the sidewalk. It should be noted that there are only two businesses, Azteca Market and Luna Travel, that daily clean and wash the sidewalk in front of their establishments. Yesterday, a gentleman from Luna Travel was power washing not only the front of their store, but down along Lincoln Avenue. Additionally, last week, the management company for the building next to the plaza power washed their sidewalk. It was sorely needed. In two years, I have not witnessed any other businesses or stores taking any cleaning action. Last week, I met with the Department of Public Works regarding these issues. I certainly sympathize with their tireless efforts and keep San, to keep San Rafael clean, but it seems to be quite a challenge. The other item, I am sure you are aware of the mother and adult son who have been residing on Fourth Street and the west side of City Hall for almost two years, with all of their possessions of suitcases, bags, and such. It seems others are now catching on, and now a woman, along with her large cart and possessions, has taken up residence on A Street next to Starbucks. She places her, she places her bedding on the sidewalk at night. Additionally, there is a man with his possessions currently residing at Luton's Place. How soon before more folks take up residence? My concern, and I would hope everyone's concern, is the unsanitary condition this creates on our sidewalks, benches, lawns, and streets. I am aware there are various programs in place, and realize what a daily battle it must be. However, we can't simply allow people to reside on the streets and sidewalks of San Rafael, along with all their trappings they possess. I am alarmed and deeply concerned about the future of San Rafael.
Please wrap it up, sir.
Last week, I took pictures of what I have spoken about. Should any council member request, I would certainly forward it to him. On a brighter note, there is a gentleman for the past two-plus years who has spent his Saturday and Sunday mornings picking up cigarette butts and trash along Fourth Street. He requested, I didn't mention his name, he just wants to do what he can to make it better and cleaner downtown. And kudos to the street teams, with just a broom and a dustpan, they make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And why don't you, why don't you give me a call one of these days, and we'll chat about some of those points? I'm interested in your points, and maybe pass on some of the things we have done. But in any case, when you have a chance, thank you. Next, is it Ernestine Lawson? If I have that right? Yes, thank you.
Not completely in uniform. Good afternoon, council and audience. My name is Ernestine Lawson, and I work, I'm sorry, I work for Marin Airporter, and we have a contract with the county. I'm here to suggest a proposal for a third and Heatherton lane change. I have four points. One, place a lane change sign at the pole on the southbound side of the street, designating a lane change for the third lane, which is the second one from the curve, for, to exempt buses to make a turn, a right turn, so they have better and faster access to the terminal. The reason for that, it will create faster and easier access to the terminal, it will eliminate the backup in the lane four, because most drivers don't like to be behind buses. The other thing, it would give better visibility, um, better visi, better, oops, eliminate the backup. The sign would give a better visibility on the access or use if the cars go around, and also, the other one, I'm getting lost, the intersection there should be put into a keep clear, so give access for emergency vehicles to go through, and better visibility also for pedestrians to be avoid getting hit. It gives, uh, the other point would be to give police officers an intermittent staffing there, so they can give tickets for violating, not keeping clear. Vehicles making a right turn out of the lane that is exempt for buses to make that turn. Uh, the only problem I have with that is if it would be a, I said traffic, trap, entrapment. The third one would be the cost. The only cost would be the sign that we have that's currently in San Rafael is behind the sign that says downtown San Rafael, and it's placed at an angle where you can only see it if you're going westbound off of Fourth Street. There's no other sign designating what lane is for what, even though it's on the street. The other one is, the cost would be to place a sign on the westbound side of, no, reposition the one on the westbound side on Fourth and Heatherton, to put one on the eastbound side on Fourth and Heatherton. And I'm not sure how much the police staffing would be, would cost to have someone intimately, like when the school kids were there, and rush hour. But the traffic, having officers there would also increase or improve, I don't know how the, think, resources, I mean, uh, public relation is with the officers and the city here, because I don't live here, but I believe it would also improve the, that with the students and just, and their visibility.
If we could wrap it up, but your, your comments have been noted by our city manager and our chief of police, and since you're out there and you see it firsthand, we appreciate your observation.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public expression, turn to the manager, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I have a couple, an update and a couple announcements. The first one is that we are hearing today from PG&E that we could be facing another power shut-off this week. I'm just gonna pause for the collective groan from the audience. Uh, it looks like they're saying at this point about twenty-three thousand meters located in Marin County, and beginning on Wednesday of this week in the late afternoon, with restoration hopefully beginning the next day. As we found through the power shut-offs in the, in the past, it's still, it's too early to be able to say how much of the city, or whether those times that I just said will be accurate or not. Uh, so I just wanted to let the council know that we're closely monitoring it. Uh, at this point, we're not talking about setting up our emergency operations center because it doesn't look like it would affect all of San Rafael. If that changes, then we would be setting up our emergency operations center. Uh, we'll be attempting to support whatever neighborhoods, if it, if it, if the conditions that are being suggested today hold, that'll be parts of San Rafael and the northern, parts of northern San Rafael, so we would be doing our best to support those neighborhoods that are affected. Uh, it's likely to change between now and then, so we'll know a lot more, and we're kind of monitoring it every twelve hours as we get closer, um, as, as PG&E gives out more reports. So just want to let you know that we are on that topic. A couple items are going on tomorrow that the community may be interested in or may not have heard about yet, but we have a ribbon cutting for Fire Station Fifty-Seven, and it's also gonna be coincided with an event to honor our outgoing amazing fire chief, Chief Gray, on his retirement. So, Station Fifty-Seven is, I think, quite a jewel in the community. It's architecturally gorgeous, in my opinion, and I think fits in well with all of the Frank Lloyd Wright design in that particular area, and it's gonna be an important building that serves the community for many, many, many decades. Uh, and it'll be also a great opportunity to honor Chief Gray, who'll be starting his retirement in December. So that's tomorrow, the, from, starting at five o'clock till six-thirty PM, and that's at Station Fifty-Seven, which is at thirty-five fif, fifty, thirty-five-thirty Civic Center Drive, but no one will know where that is. It's right across from the Civic Center and right next to the post office there, uh, in, in that part of San Rafael. Uh, and then lastly, right after that event, um, there's a great event that's going on at San Rafael High School, which is called Our Stories: Immigration in Our Community. And that's, it's from five to eight, so there's a little bit of an overlap, you might have to try to be in both places at the same time. I think the program actually starts at six at the, at the high school, uh, so there is time to get to both of those events. It's the High School Link Leadership Class, and they're showcasing students' personal stories, which I think will be really interesting, of immigration, and they'll be discussing why people decide to come here, the struggle students who have immigrated go through, and how people can be allies. Um, so that's co-sponsored by Not in Our Town San Rafael, and also many community partners that are, that are a part of that event. So a couple great opportunities, uh, to, for your, for your Tuesday evening. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just, a quick question on the, the power. Uh, what about our traffic signals? Are those gonna be operational or not?
So in areas where the power's out, it depends on, depends on where the area is that the power's out, and we, the sig, many of the signals can go to backup flashing red. Uh, they have battery backup for a period of time, and depending on the length of the outage, which this one sounds like it's not gonna be as long potentially as the last one, we could be okay. What we've been talking about today is that if that's not the case, or we're in an area where we don't have backup battery, that we'll be putting out the A-frame signs again that at, that say stop, make it a four-way stop. It's a good opportunity to remind the community that if you don't see any lights, treat it as a four-way stop. Uh, we'll be doing our best to get the A-frames out there with stop signs on them, but even if that's not the case, um, people should be aware that it's a four-way stop if you don't see the flashing red.
And obviously, we don't run SMART, but SMART is going through our downtown. Do you know whether it's gonna be operating? I mean, I'll know Wednesday, but a lot of good that does us right now.
Have we heard, um, we have not heard yet, I haven't heard from SMART.
We have a lot of writers, so it would be helpful to, to sort that.
Engineering and PIO type of people in the audience, and we have not yet heard from SMART what their plans are.
And hopefully, we'd let them know as soon as possible, and I'll, I'll call tomorrow on that. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we shall therefore turn to the consent, consent calendar, items four A through four H, unless someone wishes to have an item held.
Four C.
Four C, did you say that? Okay. Any others? Anyone from the audience wish to address us on these items, John? They will be covered in a single motion, and now would be time to inquire or comment. John, come on up.
John Reynolds, resident of the canal, member of Presbyterian Methodist Church. These questions could be answered just by individuals, I suppose. They may not need to be answered tonight, but I'm just concerned about the short-term rental ordinance, number C. And just an explanation how that's gonna affect or not affect accessory dwelling units, is competition for that? Maybe it's not. Maybe not a lot of people are coming forward to do accessory dwelling units because it requires a little bit more than maybe renting something, but it would be good to get an explanation about that, just maybe it's not a big deal, but we need to have balance. I understand people that need to do short-term rentals, uh, it's important to consider their concerns as well, but I think it'd be good to get some rationale or explanation about that. And then, should I address another one that I should on there or not? Is that?
Uh, you can, you can comment on any of them. We're actually going to be discussing that particular item, if it's, I'm assuming you're making reference to four C.
Well, it's four C, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right, it was offered.
So we're gonna have, I'm sorry, I must take a little discussion on that.
I didn't hear the number, okay. And the other, should I try the other one too?
Yeah, please, sure.
And the Affordable Housing Agreement, uh, two-eleven, two-fifteen bill, authorizing city manager to sign a below-market rate agreement for rental unit at two-eleven to two-fifteen Bell Street. I'm just trying to get a sense of how much below market rate? Can we get some kind of figure?
I'll ask the, uh.
You know, I'm concerned about people that make twenty thousand, thirty thousand a year, you know, sixty percent come here and can't, can't live here. So I'm just concerned about that.
Okay, I'll ask the city manager to comment on that in a moment. Anything else?
Those are the two.
Okay. Um, anyone else wish to address any of these items before we take action? Seeing none, we'll close public, come back. Jim, do you wish to comment on the MRs?
I might need a community development director to come help me with this one, actually.
Sorry.
Good evening.
Thanks.
Uh, yes, this agreement was drafted, it's, just to give you a little background, and I'll be very short. The subject property has a cottage. The cottage, we discovered, had a kitchen. It's a great little cottage, perfect unit, so we worked out an agreement with the property owner to get a density bonus, assuming that they can price this unit at below-market rate, and agree to the agreement that you, that is before you tonight. It is priced for a two-person household, because it's large enough for that, at seventy percent of the median, and I can give you an idea of what the, uh, the annual salary is that qualifies, if you can just give me a moment here. And if I can't find it, I'd, I'd happy to. Oh, is that the seventy-six-six? Yeah, here we go, two thousand and nineteen. Okay. I think the rent specified in the agreement, it's at, I believe, a one-bedroom for a two-person household is eighteen hundred and sixty-four dollars a month, and the qualifying amount here for a two-person household is seventy-six thousand, six hundred dollars a year. That's the, and that's considered low income for a two-person household.
Okay, uh, any further questions on this item? In which case, a motion with regard to all items except for four C would be appropriate.
I move that we approve the consent calendar, other than four C.
Second.
In a second roll call, please.
Councilor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilor Collin.
Aye.
Councilor Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm out of carries, five-zero, turn to four C, short-term rental, John.
Yeah, really quick, um, I, I believe all of us received a, an email from one of the constituents, and it was addressed to us, and also to Ethan, who prepared the report for us. And I just wanted to make sure that we addressed the questions that, um, he had, had posed to us. So if you don't mind, Ethan, I understand you spoke with him today. Was there anything, you know, in particular that came out of those conversations on, on what he was asking? I believe he was asking about getting a definition of, of primary residence in line with some of the other communities that have, had have put forth these ordinances, also setting limitations on truly non-owner occupied or the number of, number of rental days per year if it was a non-owner occupied, um, short-term rental. And I can't remember the, the other one off time, but maybe, maybe you can point to that.
Yeah, um, so I, I, I think the, the first place to start off with the, the question about primary residency, um, is the definition that we took was based upon neighboring jurisdictions and their best practices. So, uh, San Francisco, they require five forms of identification, um, in order to prove that the unit in which you would be renting is gonna be your primary residence. You can have a second home, but the, the place it's being used as a short-term rental has to be your primary residence. Uh, that includes utility bill, voter registration, license, um, the homeowner's, homeowner's tax occupancy exemption, um, as well as, as a utility bill already. In those jurisdictions, they require two of those, um, documents. We were, are requiring three as part of this ordinance. Uh, the benefit of that is mostly that i- it's, it's an additional level to prove primary residency. Is there a person who may potentially submit three documents? One of them may not necessarily be accurate. That is a case, that is a potential, but that's why we included auditing requirements as part of the, the ordinance itself, as part of the resolution, so that we can go in and take a look to make sure that if you are a primary resident, you are maintaining that.
Really, just a follow-up on that primary residence. If we were to, through auditing, find out that this wasn't, and they had, you know, they've done their voter registration for the residence, but never lived there and don't live there, and we audit and find that out, is there a, I know we did a kind of a three-strikes thing, is this kind of a one-strike thing, that if, if they gave us basically false information, that they could be removed from the program altogether?
Yeah, there's a clause within the enforcement that if there's any fraudulent, um, activity on your registration, the community development director is able to immediately revoke that, that registration.
Furthermore, if they weren't a prime resident, they wouldn't qualify. So I said, if they were not a prime resident, then it couldn't, couldn't be used as such, so there's sort of a double whammy there. And maybe, maybe a signature, I, I, you know, I promised that I live here.
Yeah, and, and all registrations would be submitted, um, to the testing that they're true.
Any other, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so, and I wanna, um, follow up on that because I had occasion to communicate with Henry Warren, who sent us a very thoughtful email on this, and the distinction that I thought he was get, the additional distinction, I thought he was getting at, in addition to ensuring that primary residency is defined appropriately and the right kind of documents are required, is that even if we do require, um, certain documentation and, and it's supplied to us, it doesn't actually guarantee that the person is in fact residing at the location, and that there might be other ways to get at it, to, that is, to get at the issue of homes being rented out full-time or for extended periods without the owner being present, like, for example, imposing limits. I think the example he gave from New Jersey was sixty days per calendar year. I mention that because while I think that we're in a good place, we're in a better place now than we were before, particularly in light of what's going on in other communities, in terms of creating a regulatory structure, we promised to come back within a year to revisit this and to see what's working and what's not, and to revise our ordinance. I think one revision we should look very closely at when we return to this is broadly the issue of primary residency, but also whether or not we should impose limits like , uh, communities elsewhere do, to ensure, and also to decide as a, as a community and as a council, whether we want to absolutely require full-time occupancy of the residence at all times, that is, residents at all times that rentals are taking place, um, which presently our ordinance doesn't require. So I think that's something worth considering as we revisit this, but right now, I'm content that we're in a better place, and I'd like to see this proceed.
Thank you for your comment. It is final, so any change, we'd have to go through the process once again. Uh, I would like to compliment you, though, because there was rather nice editorial in the IJ about, uh, the avenue we've taken, and I think it expressed itself pretty well, and, uh, so, good job on this, and, and thanks for helping us through it. Anyone from the public wish to address us on this item?
A question I would ask you.
Come on, play, John, come on.
About the second dwelling units, well, how, maybe it's not a big deal either way, I don't know.
What, what's your question, John?
Well, how does, the competition for, uh, short-term rentals would be in competition with, maybe not, maybe it's totally a different thing.
We have discussed this pretty extensively, it's the second reading, so, uh, maybe you weren't here, I'm not sure, but if you were to call our city manager, I'm sure you'd be glad to, uh, to handle that for you.
Okay, that, that's fine, I'll, I'll talk to him then.
Thank, thank you, thank you for that, John. Anyone else? Close, come back, uh, let's have a motion on this item.
I move we, uh, pass four C, and I think that's passed the ordinance.
Final adoption of the ordinance?
Final adop, final adoption of the ordinance.
Second. Move the second roll call, please.
Councilor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilor Collin.
Aye.
Councilor Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm out of carries, five-zero. We now will turn to special presentations, and ask you to join us to the podium. So this is a proclamation supporting Shop San Rafael, and I understand, what an entrance. The BID, the BID will be accepting the proclamation. Is that all the above, or, who, y'all come down, on behalf of BID. And it is talking about Shop San Rafael, which I'm sure we all subscribe to. A couple of things within the proclamation I'll share with you, and then a comment, I'm sure. Uh, local business of San Rafael economic engine is to make up an essential part of the economic health of San Rafael, city of San Rafael, and contributes to the vibrant and active street life in San Rafael. Local business could help create a strong local economy, provide unique products and services to residents and businesses, foster community connections and gathering space, and provide employment and leadership opportunities. Uh, city of San Rafael supports San Rafael Chamber Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Marin Small Business Development Center, and the San Rafael BID. These two are from the BID. All of which are highly successful resources supporting and advocating the businesses throughout San Rafael. Goes on to say, and now therefore, I, Gary Phelps, Mayor of San Rafael, do hereby proclaim, city of San Rafael, support to Shop San Rafael. So thank you, thank you for doing so. I know you're gonna expand on that, so I left you plenty of time. One of the two of you.
Well.
I'm gonna talk very shortly, 'cause I'll start coughing, but, um, you see, you might see these all around town, and we're having a special Shop San Rafael Saturday, Shop Local San Rafael. So we're hoping that you remember to spend, um, your community dollars, your dollars, in your own community where it really makes a difference, so we appreciate when you do that and remember to do that. And I'll hand it off to Jaime, the president of the Board of Directors.
Well, no, I know, I really, I, we're very brief, just, I want to thank you, the city, the champs of commerce and community, for supporting the local businesses. The, uh, local businesses is really the small engine, the, the engine of our economy, and I really ask of you and encourage you to, uh, drop your Amazon subscription, and, uh, stop by in Shop Local. I was glad to hear this, this evening, that one of the, uh, city employees or city officials, uh, they dropped their subscription about a year ago, and so since then, they've been shopping locally, so I, thank you, Corey. I, uh, I thank you for that, thank you.
Hey, thank you so much. Excellent, excellent. Thank you. I think these go pretty quickly, and I may change the order of the other agenda items to, to facilitate this evening, but public hearing regarding trian, triannual building ordinance, code ordinance amendments. Good evening.
Good evening, council, I'm Don Jepson, chief building official. I just have a short slide presentation hitting on a couple items. So it's really easy for me to geek out on the building code, so I won't take too much of your time.
You promised you'd make this interesting.
It should be interesting. So one of the things I'm very proud of on the code is we're reformatting Title Twelve, so it's a lot easier to read. If you looked at Twi, Title Twelve before to find out what code we adopted, you almost had to go through all forty-six pages. Um, the codes were spread out throughout, the information, that key information was spread out through the title. So in this case, we reformat it. We also had administrative sections over ten different, um, California building codes. We We compiled that mostly into now Title XII, so you just look in one section. You'll notice on one of the other slides, I'll point out where we're adopting most chapters between Chapter Two through whatever, because most of the Chapter Ones are administrative, and they're either in conflict of each other, or they created more amendments. So we've pulled everything into Title XII for administrative. This also supports the permit simplicity initiative that was started about eighteen months ago with Marin Builders, and they're happy that we're trying to streamline the system, has better readability. We went from a hundred and thirty-eight amendments down to forty-four amendments. We got rid of most of those conflicts in the administrative items. And we went from forty-six pages to fifty pages, but they're a good read, so I highly recommend it. So this is the very beginning of Title XII, and you'll notice here, we have all twelve codes that we adopted right here in this section. You don't have to go through the other fifty pages to find it, it's all right here. The next item down on the bottom is all our design, local design criteria for everything. And that information was either not in Title XII, or it was spread out throughout the code. So here, just this one page, we brought all that information here, including all the appendices that we've adopted from the different codes. The other improvement we made is on the amendments, we've actually underlined the changes that we've made, and strike through the changes from the base code, and we've kept that in the format. So you can look at this document and see what we changed. Before, there was no underlining or strike-through, so you had to compare this document with the base code, and then try to figure out what we changed. Here, it's clear. For those codes that we haven't done any amendments, we also try to make it clear by stating that there's no amendments. So in this case, California electrical codes and California energy code, there's no amendments. So you don't have to look through fifty pages and then try to determine if we've actually hit an amendment on you or not. The last item on the bottom of the screen is just one of the new amendments we did add, and I just wanted to point it out. Under California building code, we are allowed, if we adopted by ordinance, to reduce the efficiency dwelling units from a hundred and twenty square feet down to a hundred and fifty square feet. So working with planning, we decided to take this route to a hundred and fifty square feet. The next item is looking at the Tier One residential occupancies. And what we did here, I tried to take all the Tier Ones and put them in a simple list for you guys to review and, uh, to look at. The areas that are highlighted in yellow are things that have changed from last code cycle to this code cycle. So taking them in the order on the list, new multifamily dwellings have gone from five percent to fifteen percent of the total parking spaces for future electrical vehicle charging. Hotels and motels have now have their own table to determine how many parking spaces for electrical charging you need. Then, we never did get around to adopting the energy efficiency in the last code cycle. So these would be new Tier Ones that we would be adopting. Everything else on this sheet that's not highlighted in yellow is just carried over from the last code cycle. So there's fifteen Tier One items on here. Not all of them would apply to a single-family dwelling, some of them are for multifamily specific, or like I mentioned before, new hotels or motels. So these two slides, we took off the California green building site. The change from last adoption to this adoption would save about seven percent of energy on a typical home. If you include the solar rooftop that's now mandatory, it would increase it to fifty-three percent energy savings from the last code cycle. This portion, just the energy portion alone, will increase the cost of construction by about ninety-five hundred dollars. But it's anticipated that over a thirty-year period, you would get nineteen thousand dollars in savings from electrical. So down here, the Energy Commission estimates that standard will add about forty dollars per month to average home, that save eighty dollars a month in heating and cooling and lighting bills. I've also talked to some builders out of the area, and they say the total package for the increase to all the building codes, and they're building larger homes than what's modeled here, is about thirty thousand dollars. So, that's my presentation. Happy to talk about formatting, and any other questions?
We enjoyed that. Questions? I would guess, yes, thank you.
So, I just want to thank you. I, as you may know, I've had some reservations in the past, not about the purpose behind adoption of the Green Building Code and Tier One standards, but more about our, what I believe is our failure to fully explain both cost and benefit. And you've done, or you've made that effort here today, and I very much appreciate it. I do want to ask, though, you talk about, the Green Building Code was, as I recall, was first implemented statewide in California, I think in two thousand nine, and it's gone through several update cycles, as you made reference to. So when we, when you refer to the added cost, are you talking about the added cost for this cycle? Is nine, ninety-five hundred dollars for a single-family home, a new build? Or is it since the beginning of the Green Building Code back in two thousand nine?
How I understand, the Energy Commission's number is the difference from last code cycle to this code cycle. So it would not include how we were building in two thousand nine to now.
And that would be consistent with, of course, what we were, learned at our housing workshop last week, which was that, at least in Los Angeles, the Green Building Code, since its implementation, has added about eleven percent to the cost of a new home, which is pretty significant. This is closer to maybe one percent. So, while I am in favor, obviously, the, the larger, the cycle code updates, I think it's important for us to do, but the Tier One standard, let's be really clear, this is optional for us as a community. And while we aspire to what it represents, that is, for greater sustainability in our community, it does come with a cost. And one of those costs potentially is an impact on a developer's willingness to build new housing, given the very tight margins that were explained to us by Ethan Guy at our meeting last week. A four and a half percent return, and you've got a one percent increase in costs, and construction costs are sixty-seven percent of the total, you can really see that it's meaningful over time. So I express that reservation, but this time, I'm comfortable moving forward, and I would be prepared to make a motion.
In a moment, other comments? Public comment? Anyone? Bill? Uh-oh, you brought, what, show and tell?
Yeah, I have show and tell. I'm, I'm not coming bearing gifts of show and tell.
We, we assume.
But a gift of information. Well, I, so San Rafael really endorses this, glad we're moving forward to the cost item. You know, it's, it's, the, the figures come out pretty well, as expressed in the staff report, and that's before you get the benefit of PACE financing. That can extend that out for the life of, of, of the improvement, and federal tax deductions, and also county grant, grants for efficient energy systems. So there are ways of doing this, that further reduce that cost. We urge the city to redouble its efforts to extend standards like this from new construction to rehabilitation projects. That's most, or that's a, a lot of the work being done, and it's a significant opportunity to, in both new and rehab, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from buildings, which account for thirty-four percent of our overall greenhouse gas pollution. So it's a significant thing. We also urge staff and council to begin twenty twenty with a bang by adopting the Marin County Reach Code options that were mentioned in the staff report. They were upgraded just last month. They incentivize the electrification of buildings, and therefore the complete elimination of fossil fuels from our homes and businesses. The Marin model also encourages EV charging readiness, which of course extends the fossil-free potential to our biggest climate polluter, transportation. With MCE energy, all-electric buildings, and electric cars, we can reduce our direct climate pollution by ninety-five percent. This is not an insignificant thing for us locally and globally. Moreover, when equipped with a simple inverter, such as the size of this box, it, and when you're, when fully charged, prior to an announced power outage, such as we're hearing about, you can actually charge, you can actually feed your house with the battery of your car. This is the inverter that makes the critical link. The battery of your car can, can run your lights, keep your free, keep your food frozen for a period of days. So again, a lot quieter than a generator, a lot less energy, a lot less greenhouse gas producing than a generator, and I would recommend it to everybody. You get to drive the EV all year long, and you've got an emergency backup when you need it. Commend you, your action tonight, and also that action, hopefully, early next year, to follow the lead of the county. Thank you.
And thank you very much, and it might be of interest to be better informed as to what the county recently did, so keep that at some point in time, put that on your agenda. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll return to the item itself, and is there a motion with regard to this item?
May I ask a question first?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Uh, would it be possible to respond to the query about the rehab buildings, and whether that would be something, what, what that would look like if we were to consider that?
So, everything we're talking about here is really for new construction. So if you're looking like ADUs, either in existing square foot of a home, the new ADU wouldn't really be affected, only if it was like a detached standalone building, new construction. So a lot of remodels in those things would not really be affected by the green code or a model energy code. There are a couple of exceptions. How much of a house can you tear down before we're going to consider it new construction? The county has adopted fifty percent on the exterior envelope, which seems pretty, a lot of jurisdictions have kind of adopted that same sort of model, between fifty and seventy-five percent of changing the exterior walls would trigger it being considered new construction and having to meet the energy code or the green building code.
Is that in the proposal?
Not right now, no. So we're looking at just new construction, just like it's written in the California code. That would be one of the items we'd like to bring back to the council in twenty twenty.
Just, and I'd be interested in hearing more on that, being that majority, we don't have a lot of new constructions, other than JDU's and ADU's, but we do have significant remodels, so that might get us farther on our climate goals, what we're trying to do.
Good point.
Yeah, and the other piece that's really critical is that idea of being as consist- consistent as possible around the county. I mean, that's the one thing that we heard from the Marin Builders Association, is all of it's going to cost some money, but time is money, too, and if a builder goes to one counter, and it's one way, and goes to another counter, it's drastically different, that makes it very, very difficult for them, so that's important to keep in mind. So we've committed to work with the Marin Builders Association next year to try to help with that consistency.
So in January, when we discuss it, we'll have a sense of what the other jurisdictions are doing as well, so we don't get out of sync. Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you. Anyone else seeing no one, is there a motion with regard to this item?
I move that we have the final adoption of ordinance one nine seven four.
And second?
Second.
Move in second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm Eric Currys, five zero. We'll turn to the fire code and ordinance amendments, final adoption.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the city council, this will be quite brief. There is no PowerPoint presentation to go along with this. It's the routine trian- triannual update of the California Fire Code twenty nineteen edition with local amendments. All fire agencies in the state are presently undergoing this process in order to have the twenty nineteen California Fire Code adopted by the January one twenty twenty state law mandate. The update this evening contains clerical updates that reflect revised code sections of both the California Fire Code and the City Municipal Code. Each of the local amendments in the ordinance tonight are rollovers from the twenty sixteen code. There are no vegetation management standards being proposed this time. Future vegetation standards will be brought back as the Marin Wildfire JPA rolls forward, and work conducted by the Wildfire Advisory Committee is vetted through the public workshops and council consideration. Staff has received no public feedback from public noticing or outreach to both the Marin Builders Association and Marin Realtors Association. Therefore, we recommend adoption of, of ordinance nineteen seventy-five.
Questions? Anyone from the public on this item? Close back for a, a motion.
Before making the motion, I just want to thank the chief for the outreach, outreach to MAR and the Marin Builders, and the same on the previous matter as well. And with that, I move that we finally adopt ordinance nineteen seventy-five.
Second.
Move in second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm Eric Currys, five zero, and we'll now turn to other agenda items. And why don't we go ahead and start according to the, the agenda? That is seven A, which is exclusive negotiations with Goldstone Management. Welcome. Hi. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips and council. Tonight, I'm joined by our special legal counsel, Jerry Ramiza, and developer Paul Goldstone, and his development team for tonight's presentation. I'm going to start with a quick, high-level overview of what is being considered tonight, and then turn it over to the Goldstone team to talk about their development proposal, and then back to city staff and legal counsel for council questions. The project we are talking about in question is one thousand and one Fourth Street in our downtown city core. And staff's recommendation tonight is to pursue an exclusive negotiating agreement, typically referred to as an ENA. And what we are looking to do is have council approval to authorize staff and city manager to enter into an ENA, to explore the developers' requests to acquire the Luton's parking garage, and explore the feasibility of acquiring, replacing, and improving that garage site to support a broader mixed-use, large residential and retail development. Real quickly, the project supports a variety of general plan goals and policies, and they are listed here, but just to touch on them briefly, is to expand downtown's economic success and increase opportunities for retail and residential and office development out of our neighborhood element, create a popular and attractive residential environment that contributes to the activity and sense of community in our downtown, which we believe the proposed project can do, and to encourage activities that will promote Fourth Street Retail Core and being alive after five, so getting some of that evening nighttime foot traffic that we hope to achieve in our downtown in the long term. And then finally, the economic vitality element around infill and re, and reuse opportunities, so identifying sites for redevelopment potential that could really help build on that expansion potential in our downtown. So quickly, trying to break down the agreement in just a few soundbites that we can talk to in greater detail during council questioning, the developer is proposing to acquire the city's Luton's parking garage and merge with his existing adjacent parcels to build a mixed-use residential retail market hall-style food emporium. As part of the proposal, the developer would build a fully automated parking garage that would be replacing all one hundred and seventy-one public parking spots, and build additional parking capacity for his development project, both the retail and the residential component. Under the ENA strategy, this is kind of the strategy of the agreement, what we would be looking at is the feasibility of this proposal, the automated parking garage, both from a technical, financial, and operational perspective. And so we would be working through a parking study and analysis both done by the city and the developer. And then ultimately, if both of these terms are acceptable, we would be moving from a primary, preliminary feasibility concept, and moving into the disposition and development agreement portion of the negotiation period. All said and done, if we are successful in agreeing to these preliminary stage feasibility confirmation, we'll move into the DDA portion, disposition and development agreement, not to exceed a term of twenty-four months. So the total negotiation time between the city and the developer would not exceed that time. Just to touch on some of the key milestones. Just to touch on some of the key milestones of the agreement, the, once the agreement, if you choose to approve tonight, is executed, the developer deposits $50,000 with the city. The developer retains a parking consultant, and those funds are, the city will use and bill against for parking studies and any type of legal counsel will need during this preliminary phase. 120 days of the effective date, the developer submits a parking plan to the city for review, and prior to expiration of the preliminary stage, the city and developer will discuss the parking analysis. So some of the things on the parking analysis that we would be looking at is kind of the owner interest, the parking rates, and preserving that public parking benefit in perpetuity. Once and if we reach feasibility confirmation, what we would be moving into is the disposition and development agreement stage, which is, we've laid out in the staff report and the contract, so that is attached, a 15-month period. And during that time, we would be negotiating the disposition and development agreement DDA term sheet, which would require a second deposit from the developer and more details in how we proceed with the projects, both in the entitlement portion and additional studies that would be warranted on the project. Now, before we turn it over, we'd like to have our land use, special attorney, Jerry, talk with you about a new condition we'd like to add to the resolution tonight.
Thank you, Danielle. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name, as Danielle mentioned, is Jerry Ramiza. I'm with the law firm of Burke Williams &amp; Sorensen. I've been helping city staff with the negotiation and drafting of the ENA. So every once in a while, when you're working on a project like this, the state legislature will come along at the 11th and a half hour and throw you a curveball that suddenly makes you step back and say, wait a minute, we have to change course on the path we were going down. And so that's exactly what happened here a few weeks ago. So we concluded, really concluded most of the negotiating, negotiation and drafting of the ENA several weeks ago, and about four weeks ago, the governor signed a law that made some substantial amendments to a portion of the government code known as the Surplus Lands Act. And so the legislation was AB 1484. And traditionally, the Surplus Lands Act has really kicked in when a city has property it wants to sell, but not for any real particular public purpose. So you have property, you no longer need it, you're not interested in selling the property to achieve economic development goals or some other public purpose, and it's just available for sale. In that scenario, state law has long required that you give a first opportunity, essentially a first opportunity to negotiate to affordable housing sponsors, school districts, and park districts. So basically favoring those three types of land uses before the land would just be sold to the highest bidder, to someone else. And as I mentioned, traditionally, where cities were pursuing other goals, the conclusion was, the land's not surplus. We have a, we have a particular objective in selling the property. Well, the recent changes to the law basically take those other public purposes off the table. So the, the state legislature has said economic development, retail, commercial development is not considered a governmental use, and therefore, Surplus Lands Act is potentially triggered. So that caused us to look a little bit closer at the legislation. I think it's clear, in light of the new legislation, that if the city decided it did not need public parking at that site and it wanted to sell the property to a developer for development, you would first have to go through this first rate of negotiation period with the preferred users of the property. There is, however, an exemption in the statute. There's a definition of exempt surplus lands. So there's certain types of property that is exempt from this requirement. One of them, small lots, 5,000 square feet, land under abandoned public right-of-way, if you're selling property to another governmental agency, for instance, those are some of the exceptions. There's a fourth exception for property that is part of an exchange transaction where you are conveying an interest in real property and receiving an interest in real property in exchange. And while we have not, certainly haven't negotiated all the terms of a disposition and development agreement, it's the purpose of the ENA, we still have to go through that process, but the marching orders that I've received from staff from inception have been, the city needs public parking at this site, so as part of any real estate transaction, the city would expect to receive back after the project's completed, an interest in real property that would ensure public use of the 171 spaces. So we believe that that, that aspect of the transaction, that real property exchange piece should enable the city to qualify under that definition of exempt surplus lands. I'll just mention one other thing, just sort of the practical realities of using this particular piece of property for one of those other preferred uses. I think if the city was to decide, wants to do more than the law requires and to still offer the property up to one of those preferred users, the terms of sale would be, in order to build affordable housing or a school or a park, you need to first build a 171-space parking garage as part of your project and, and somehow give that back to the city or allow the city to use it. At conservatively $40,000 a space times 171 spaces, that's $6.8 million. So I think anyone else looking at this property would say it's about the worst possible development opportunity site for one of those other preferred uses. So I think on the staff side, we feel, you know, comfortable moving forward with the ENA under that exception to AB 1, 1484. And there's some language which is up before you, where we have recommendation, we think it's important to be transparent about the new legislation, to point out that we've considered it, we're aware of it, and to explain why it is that the city believes it's, it's appropriate to enter into the ENA and not go through this additional process. So that additional language, I have, there's one additional new whereas clause before you. That's in addition to the resolution that was included originally in your agenda packet and one additional resolved paragraph. I'll just point out one thing quickly, that whereas clause in the third line down, about the middle of the line, after the, let's see. Yeah, after, near the end of the third line, after agency uses comma, the words "the disposing agency" should be stricken. I think that's, text is confusing and not needed, and the sentence reads more clearly without those three words. So I'd recommend that change, but otherwise suggest the additional whereas clause and the additional resolved paragraph for your consideration. And I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thanks, thanks for the report. I guess the one question I would have, and perhaps more appropriately for Mr. Goldstone and his, his team to answer, but as far as you're, you know, therefore we know, they are in, they are okay with this, this change, such as it is? I mean, it's not really, but I presume everybody is okay with it before we...
We, we talked very briefly today, and I see some heads nodding in the audience, so I...
I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Questions of staff? Staff report. Andrew.
I'm not sure if my question is for staff or perhaps for Mr. Goldstone and his team, but oftentimes, when a DDA is negotiated, or when you go into an ENA and then move to a DDA, there's not a feasibility stage that precedes the substantive negotiation. Why was it so important here? I get that parking is a little different, but there's this six-month preliminary stage that appears to give the parties breathing room and provides an out for either side. Why is that so important?
Well, we, we came up with the idea of a preliminary stage because one aspect of the proposal is to potentially produce public parking in a mechanized automated parking lot. So there are a couple of those, maybe a few of those around the state, but the idea is you drive into the parking garage and it's more like an elevator cab, and you leave your car, you get a ticket, punch some numbers in, your car disappears, you come back after dinner, and you retrieve your car. And so we thought that was an, an interesting idea, but we'd like to see proof of concept. It's a relatively new concept, we want to understand that it's viable from an engineering and a financial perspective. And in order to do that, it was going to require some significant amount of work, both on the developer's part and the city's part. And I think at the end of the day, the developer indicated, well, we're prepared to do that work and to demonstrate that, but we would like to know if the proof of concept, if we're able to deliver on that and demonstrate financial and engineering feasibility, that the city would then proceed to exclusively negotiate with us an agreement to deliver the project. We said, that makes sense, we'll just break it up into those two phases.
I find that kind of interesting because I've seen Mr. Goldstone over in Berkeley has such a facility, and, and I did go over there with several others and witnessed, and this was maybe a year ago, I guess, witnessed the operation. And it is pretty slick, quite frankly. It's very efficient and all that stuff. It's, it's safe, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I think they'll be able to demonstrate it, and I'm surprised that we think it's not yet been demonstrated, but so be it, I guess. Further questions are coming? Oh, please. Well, I'm sorry.
If, if, if okay, we'd like to invite the Goldstone team up for their portion of the presentation. Does that sound good?
Sure.
All right. So we'd like to invite the Goldstone representatives to come up. I will be moving through their slide points, so, so just in case you see us communicating here off to the side. Yes. Welcome, Paul.
Council people, so I want to thank you for having us here. We're having, for, for any requests to modernize the city garage at Luton's and, and Third Street. I hate this out of my own voice. And we're really excited to move this project along. We're excited to create basically an enduring downtown centerpiece and to successfully develop or forge a lasting relationship with the community that will endure long into the future. I'd like to introduce, on behalf of Goldstone Management, some of our dedicated team members who are, who are and will continue to be instrumental in the creation of our overall market plan for the, for the downtown project, for the, for the market hall project. So with us is Josh Townsend, who is our community liaison, Michael Zucker, who is our lead architect, Eric Housh, who is our project facilitator, and many other things, and Gary Reggiani and associates, whom are our legal advisors. And I'm Paul Goldstone, with, with Whom the Buck Stops. So without further ado, Josh Townsend, assisted by Michael Zucker, is going to give you a brief presentation of our proposal and answer any questions that, that you would like to ask.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Good to see you again. My name is Josh Townsend, I'm on behalf of Goldstone Management. Very happy to be here, and I don't want to take much of your time because I know we're discussing mostly the agreement now, so I'm going to run through this pretty quick. But I do want to mention Paul's commitment, strong commitment to this project, and I also want to, want to comment on his strong commitment to engage in the community, which we've been doing over the past year. You know, in fact, from the last year, we've been collecting a lot of feedback. We've been collecting feedback through stakeholder meetings, through a website we launched last year, as well as a survey that most of you have taken and participated in. And as you see, we've had quite a number of responses. I know 718 responses for any survey is pretty good, so we feel pretty good about that. And that was all based on a mailer that, that Paul bankrolled to send out within a five miles of radius of the site. So, you know, my big thing is, hey, Paul, let's get out there, let's engage, and he is fully engaged in being sure that we're engaging the community, having those conversations. And once we get to the next step, we're going to continue to do so. Up on the screen now is, is Wes, you know, like I said, launched the website, sent the mailer out, and then also did a bunch of email blasts and then met with quite a few community stakeholders. And as you've seen on the site itself, there's, there's a bunch of banners on the site that kind of say, hey, you know, we're looking forward to coming downtown, creating something beautiful here in downtown. And then there's some, some, some survey responses there that we, that we're very excited to evaluate and, and talk about at a later time. There's some, we, we like to keep high visibility, obviously, like I said, website, mailer, the site signage. And one thing to note as well is that Paul's also committed to partnering with a lot of the nonprofits here in town. Already, he's partnered with the Canal Alliance, he's partnered with the Downtown Streets Team, the California Film Institute, he's been instrumental with, with the Chamber. So already, before we've even really gotten into the, into the negotiation process, he's been very engaged in the community, and he's very committed to continue doing so. So that, that's all I'll say. I'm sorry it was a little longer than I wanted, but I'm going to have Michael come up and talk a little bit just about the footprint and what we're going to be doing.
Thanks so much. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. We're really happy to be here. This is one of those kind of special projects that is right in the middle of town, it's a Keystone project, it has the opportunity to take you from older parts of town into all the new development that's happening down with BioMarin. We're hoping to really develop all of this kind of community space activity and get people between BioMarin all the way up to Fifth Street. This is really a special place. As we've, as we've been walking through with the project, there's actually parcels, you can see the parking lot there and the other three parcels all in yellow, and that's the project site. Danielle, if you could move on to the next slide. This is a slide of what we have today, and we think it can be truly dynamic. Thank you, Paul. So we think it can be really dynamic. We've shown this, and we've done some footer overlays of what an exciting project can be downtown, high-quality, something that creates a whole new atmosphere as we talk about what we can do with bringing that brick road all the way down from Fifth Street down to Fourth, across Fourth, down to Third. This is a chance to bring visibility and a place of, of action within the town itself. Just a little close-up, you can see the marketplace right in the middle of the slide there. We want to make it visible and open and inviting to everybody. This is our current Third Street elevation. You can see a photo of what we have. We would love to make this something that everybody is proud of and something that we can all look forward to. Paul is very motivated to get this thing moving, and he is thrilled to be here, and as are we all. Thank you.
And, and thank you so much. Anyone else from your team? Okay. Then I'll just comment briefly that, that I want to thank you for presenting in the windows, out of curiosity among our community members, what, you know, what's up, what does it look like, what's it going to be? And you've provided that, and there was a little bit of reluctance, not wanting to promise more than could be delivered or something else that might be delivered, but you've given the community a good sense of what, what you have in mind, and sure, it may change somewhat, but thank you for that. I know that was a concession, we talked about that, and I felt it important for the community to have some sense, and, and you provided that, so thank you for that. Thank you for that. Anyone from the, the public wish to address us on this item?
Good evening again. Bill Carney with Sustainable San Rafael. This has all the promise of a great project at the heart of downtown, increasing both economic and residential vitality. And we applaud the entrepreneurial spirit of the city, and in particular, of the economic development staff, in pursuing a public-private partnership to get the optimal results from, from the potential that's here. In that spirit, we respectfully recommend that the exclusive negotiating agreement address resolution of the following additional items... items for inclusion in the draft DDA. Firstly, the, the issue of the access and ease of use of the parking. And I've not had the pleasure going over to Berkeley and using one of these machines, but I just feel like a criteria for the city in this is to keep the same ease of, of access of shoppers up to Fourth Street shops to support our small businesses that they now have. Secondly, and most importantly, I think, for us, is the potential for securing additional affordable housing units above and beyond those required by the city code. This is something that, along these lines, has been discussed in Mr. Jensen's presentations, of granting development rights associated with public parking parcels in exchange for such units. And I think viewing this major, entering this major negotiation, that that public interest should be a primary one, if it's feasible, if it works. But we've got public value here in a parcel, and we have a public goal, in addition to parking, that perhaps could be supported. And then thirdly, the integration of the overall project with the public realm improvements, such as those that have been suggested in the downtown precise plan. Again, the conveyance of a major public property at the center of downtown offers an opportunity to create a model of public-private partnership. And the ENA certainly needs to reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Yes, John?
It looks good. I mean, I've seen develops like this other places, and it does look good. And I appreciate that. I am, I'm supporting Bill Carney on affordable housing, that we need to address that. It's viable. We need to do that strongly. That's public interest. The other thing, which may is not an issue, it's not been brought up at all, but what about native sacred spots? It's not been raised. Probably by this time it had been raised, it would have been raised from before, I suppose. So I'm just keeping this in mind, that we need to think about native sacred spots and burial grounds. Consider that. I mean, it may not be an issue, it probably is not, but just keep that in mind.
And thanks for pointing those, those points out to us. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Lilian Trak. I've been a San Rafael resident for over twenty years, and I didn't come originally for this project, but I just wanted to say that I would encourage the city to give a developer density bonuses for building affordable housing in excess, and so allow them to do something that's more than five stories. There's no reason why the City of San Rafael should be limiting developers to five stories when construction technology is such that it's fairly affordable for you guys to do seven stories in wood print construction. So, you know, the city should really be pursuing increased density, especially in a site that is so close to transit.
And thank you. And we'll have opportunity to discuss that. This is centered on parking primarily. Yes, Paul, did you have further comment?
Without going, going into detail, I think it's really important that we recognize that there are a variety of benefits, not just affordable housing. And i- it's not appropriate right now to discuss how much or how little. There are huge ecological benefits to certain approaches to construction. And so, today, a parking garage spews out just huge amounts of, of unwanteds. And that can be corrected. And so there are not just benefits to providing housing, there are also safety and ecological benefits that have to be weighed in, and each of us has to do that individually. But I think it becomes really quite clear when we, when we study that. So I'm just encouraging everybody to be thorough in their evaluation. And I think when that's done, we're all going to arrive at the same conclusion.
Good comment. Thank you for adding those. Anyone else? Close and come back. Anything that the public provided that we should take in consideration if we're acting on this item?
Mayor, I'll just add that the question about, assuming it's about archaeological impacts would happen through CEQA, as the project is, would be going through a formal planning process, and likely wouldn't be part of the ENA, which isn't a project under CEQA, but would definitely take place should the project unfold.
Good, good comment. Thanks for adding that. Anyone else? In which case, come back for other questions, observations?
I just want to make the observation, while I agree, or at least I agree with the spirit that animates Bill Carney's comments here at the podium, I don't think that, and I'm addressing myself to you, Bill, that this is the right time to bring that up. In an ENA, traditionally, you're simply carving out times for the parties to get together and talk about exactly what you raised. And if we find ourselves in agreement and a consensus develops, then we should see some of what you've just identified come to fruition in the DDA. And I'm hopeful that it does. But that said, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I'd agree with that. A motion would be appropriate.
Perfect. Then I move that we adopt the resolution.
With the amendments?
As amended. Correct. With Jerry Ramiz's suggested amendments.
Second, Pat?
Second, thank you. I moved in second. Real call, please.
Councilman Bushy.
Hi.
Councilman McCullough.
Hi.
Councilman McGambler.
Hi.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
I-
Mayor Phillips.
I'm at Herkies, five, zero. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to East San Rafael Parking Study. And once again, anyone, anyone wishing to have translation services? Lindsay, I guess, would be the person to see. Anyone? There is one person. Are there all you said? Okay. All right, thank you. So we're good to go? Help, help us, you know, because we want to make sure we're in sync with you. Should we, should we speak in several sentences and then stop, or just proceed? Okay. If it doesn't work, you raise your hand and we'll adjust, because we want to make sure that you've had an opportunity to share the conversation. Thank you. Staff report. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips, members of the City Council. My name is Rafat Ray. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works. I'll be introduced, introducing the status report of the East San Rafael Parking Study. This is a progress report, and definitely not the final report. We have a lot of work to do, as we'll show you tonight. It's a, it's a follow-up report to a parking survey that was done earlier this year. And the survey was to gauge the measures we have taken to date. There's a lot of work that has been done, a lot of collaboration internally and externally, to implement the changes. And this is truly a together San Rafael effort by the city manager, by all members of the Public Works Department, almost the maintenance staff, the engineering staff, and definitely by Parking Services. There's been some tremendous effort in upping the enforcement measures. We've installed about eight hundred signs in the area. A lot of it was done tastefully. Many of the signs were placed on existing poles, so we don't impact the area visually. We did a lot of signing and striping, and we will continue to do a lot of striping on the pavement to delineate the parking spaces with Ts and L, trying to regulate the use of this parking space.
Give him one, just wait one second.
It's not working.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
I can go back. Okay. All right. The Council Economic Development Subcommittee first reviewed the data early this year, and they recommended that we share the data with all of the stakeholders to do public outreach before we are here tonight. And staff met with the chamber, with the Chamber, with the homeowners associations, Canal Alliance leadership, and held a community forum in October that was attended by over sixty people. And in general, the stakeholders at the forum appreciated the efforts and contributed more suggestions that we're still working on, and we will continue to explore. And I'm pleased to report that the high level of civility, courteous care, and professionalism, respect, that was exhibited in that forum. I was really impressed by how a controversial matter can be discussed with, in calm and collectiveness. I really commend all of the participants. Tonight, Mark Spencer, who is not a stranger to this study, he's been working on it since the beginning. Mark Spencer is with W Trans, and he will represent the report. And we're asking the council, after deliberation, to accept the report and endorse staff suggested measures, as we all understand that we continue to make progress with those measures. With that, I turn it over to Mark Spencer.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Rafat. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Mark Spencer. I'm a senior principal with W Trans. We're the consultants who have been working cooperatively with the city and city staff on this project dating back to, actually, 2016. I want to provide a brief presentation, and also be available to answer questions at the conclusion of the presentation. Okay. So to begin, in May 2017, we delivered the East San Rafael Parking Study Report, and we made a presentation to council. And following that, the municipal code was amended in the fall of 2017 that allowed the city to make certain changes. One of the most significant was changing the on-street parking restrictions, so the city can ticket and tow after twenty-four hours instead of a seventy-two hour period. This was designed to increase the turnover of parking, as there are quite a few vehicles essentially stored on the streets throughout the area. Custom time-limited parking signs were created, as Rafat alluded to. Staff worked with the community on the placement of these signs and the time limits on a block-by-block basis. Ts and L's were added in locations that are identified by the parking enforcement officers. These are marks on the pavement to identify what is a parking space and what is not a parking space. A lot of what we saw throughout our studies over the years has been a lot of cars parking bumper-to-bumper-to-bumper, or extending into red zones, or across driveways, parking illegally. This is how we wound up with surveys that show over one hundred percent parking occupancy. The Ts and L's certainly have helped organize parking on the streets where they were placed. In October of 2018, warnings were issued. These are warnings in terms of parking, in terms of where you can and can't park. And then citations began in November of 2018. Next slide actually shows a year's worth of citation data. This starts in June of 2018, and you can see what circled October of 2018, when the warnings were issued. The color coding on the bars show the different areas within the East San Rafael study area. So the blue is Bahia, orange being the canal, and so on. Blue is Spinnaker and Baypoint. And you can see that, this is basically just a conversion from an Excel sheet that shows the number of citations. You can see quite a bit in November of 2018. And then, there was a lot of effect at that point, which I'll talk about, the results of, you know, what happened. And then it kind of subsided, as you can see, back to a similar number of citations occurring sort of on a month-by-month basis. Now, some of the sampling of the parking occupancy results. Now, what we had recommended in the May 2017 study was to implement the, start with the short-term recommendations and do a review after a one-year period. These is actually the results of a six-month, kind of an interim, let's take a look and see what's happening. Let's not wait a year. Let's go out, and I believe that was this past April, and say, what are we looking at? And this is just a sampling of, of some of the findings. In the first three, you'll see on weekday mornings, quite a bit of drop of parking occupancy levels. For reference, what we look to as parking professionals is trying to achieve an eighty-five percent parking level, or less. Eighty-five percent is that level at which parking is considered generally full, and above that, it becomes harder to find an open space. So, it winds up in excess circulation, or people starting to park where we don't want them to park. As you can see, however, on the weekday evenings, particularly in the Bahia and the Spinnaker and Baypoint sub-areas, while we've achieved reductions in parking, we're still above the eighty-five percent level that we'd like to achieve. So while we've achieved pretty good results, and I'll talk about those in more detail, not every street has been affected equally. And so it's, it's in different areas that we're experiencing the results. On the left, what you see on the bar charts are absolute numbers of parking. And you can see weekday mornings are really not when we have our parking concerns, but through the course of our study, we, we do look at that. And then weekday evenings, and particularly weekend evenings, are when we have most of our parking concerns. It's a large residential area. This makes sense. That's when people are home. They want to park at night, and on weekends, when they're home. What this shows, however, is a reduction in the total number of vehicles that are actually parking. In essence, on weekday mornings, there's about three hundred fewer vehicles. Similarly, on weekday evenings, about three hundred fewer vehicles. And on Saturday evenings, about four hundred fewer vehicles. That was, to me, actually, the first sign of some measure of success in the program. That means we've removed between three and four hundred vehicles from the street that are no longer parking there. These are vehicles that were being parked, abandoned, stored, for whatever reason. And that was the first thing we wanted to do, was let's get those off the street. And by changing the parking regulations from seventy-two to twenty-four hours, by changing the enforcement, by putting up the signs, by doing the notifications, all in a very transparent manner, we've achieved a fairly good result. In the original parking study, going back to May of 2017, there was somewhere between five hundred and eighty and six hundred spaces of deficit. Let's say we were short about that number of spaces. If we tried to park everybody that we found parked in the area, we would need another almost six hundred spaces. That's quite a bit in terms of on-street parking supply. So we've removed three to four hundred of those in our first initial foray into these changes. That means we still have some work to be done, but that's a pretty good chunk to start off with. And that's what this shows. Now, the next series, I'll take you through a series of three slides. The left is 2017, the right is 2019. These are meant to be looked at, looked at at a glance. Red and dark maroon means you've got a lot of excess parking on those streets. Green and yellow or orange are more desirable colors in terms of what we're trying to see. If you look towards the lower middle portion of the diagram, you'll see that the Kerner Boulevard area particularly shows a lot less parking in the mornings. There's also a lot less in the commercial district. This is very consistent with what we heard through our community forums, and talking with the Canal Alliance, and talking with the community. They all universally agreed, at least on one thing, which is, during the day, parking has gotten better. It's easier to find a spot pretty much at any time during the day. And by the way, the daytime wasn't really our biggest concern, but thank you for helping us during the day. I, I take small victories while I can, so that was, I'll take that one. But let's move on. Weekday evenings, as you can see, certain streets getting better, but still, we're experiencing some concerns, particularly in the canal area, particularly in Bahia and Spinnaker and Baypoint. And similarly, on Saturday evenings, just looking at the, you know, you're seeing from a, sort of a dark maroon to a lighter red. Okay, that's, that's good. That's not great. We're still not there yet. You'll see Kerner looking better, however. And this is what's important. What we've identified is there's a lot of extra- What we've identified is there's a lot of extra capacity on Kerner Boulevard. The challenge is, how do we get people to park where there's available spaces? People want to park as close to their house or to their destination. That's common. We all do that wherever we drive and wherever we go. And that's part of the strategy going forward that I'm going to talk about, is how do we affect that and cause that shift in behavior so people are parking where there's availability? In terms of the community outreach, you know, Raffat alluded to this. Within the past, uh, four months, um, three months, really, um, we've had four different, um, meetings, all of which have, um, been very fruitful and very educational for us. I think in particular, we, we learned quite a bit in terms of not only just gauging the reaction. Have people noticed a difference? I mean, we could study it, and we can measure it, and count cars and all of that, but are people actually noticing a difference? What are they experiencing? What are they feeling in real time? That's, to me, the, a good litmus test. It's also, what is staff hearing? What is the council hearing? And particularly at the community forum, we had over fifty people, and it was an interesting mix. It, as Raffat said, it was, it was a very civil discussion, and, and it was. And it was also a sense of, we're trying to find solutions as a community together that work for all of us. And there's different concerns in different neighborhoods. And there's more work that needs to be done because people are still experiencing that pain, uh, nights and weekends. There's also a lot of, um, discussion about, well, you know, there's also, um, you know, there's still a bit of jockeying of cars, people trying to reserve spaces and kind of parking in ways that makes it hard to fit another car between two of them, and then street sweeping as cars, you know, move out of the way and then come back in and backfill in. Some of that, uh, behavior still exists. There was concerns about, uh, trash and debris and things that take up parking spaces, or people loitering on the streets. There's a whole host of things, and, and we, you know, we heard all of this and we recorded all of this to try and say, okay, let's take all of this in. What do we do with this information? There were some suggestions that were made. Can we use, where can we find additional, uh, parking resources? Can we, can we find them downtown? Can we find them within our neighborhood? What would it take to get people to park further down Kerner Boulevard? Is that realistic? How is that, how would that actually work in practice? How can we incentivize that? So that was a large part of what the discussion was. Here's a picture from the, uh, Borro Community Center, and, um, we had a Spanish interpreter. I think that really helped because I think the, um, we wanted to make sure that all voices are not only heard, but also that everyone understands what it is that we're trying to present, um, and that we're not just hearing from, you know, one neighborhood, or one block, or one street. We're trying to make sure that every voice can be heard. And it's not always consistent, even within each neighborhood. We're hearing a lot of different things, but we consistently are hearing, keep going. There's more work to be done. That was consistent. And that's, that's kind of what we're summarizing here on this slide. In terms of the next steps, what we're recommending at this time, targeted enforcement with an emphasis on nighttime and key street segments that we know are more impacted than others. We now have really good data on what's happening. We've had good data before, but now through the process, we're seeing which streets are more impacted than others. There's still some storing of vehicles. There's still vehicles that are being illegally parked. That's an enforcement issue. Kerner Boulevard has excess capacity. We say, well, is that enough? Is that a solution? Kerner has over two hundred available spaces. Those are south of Bellum, however. So how do we connect that to the greater area? That's the challenge. But that's a lot of capacity that we can use nights and weekends. We have to find a way to do that. We have to encourage people, and part of that is a safety issue, quite frankly. Lighting, sidewalks, maybe changing the time limits to encourage, uh, cars that can park there. Maybe that's an area that should be more than twenty-four hours if you want them there on weekends. Um, notifying people and saying, this is where there's available parking, but making it a safe and comfortable environment in order to connect that to the other neighborhoods. I think that'll be important because that's where our largest on-street supply is located. We also want to pursue active transportation measures. This sounds a bit trite at times, but when you think about better bike and pedestrian facilities, working with Marin Transit, which has made some improvements in the area. Anything that reduces the need for everybody to own a car is positive, and it does work. There's a desire for people who don't want to have to drive everywhere for every service, or doctor appointment, or school, or medical, or employment, whatever it might be. So that's kind of a, just an overall strategy that helps reduce the need for people to have vehicles. Adding parking capacity where we can. Right now, um, Shown Park has been identified, again, it's twenty spaces. People say, well, twenty's not a whole lot when you're still showing, you know, you need like two hundred or something. But every bit helps. Twenty here, maybe another twenty there sometime down the line. Whatever it is, every bit helps, and so adding those spaces at Shown Park is certainly going to be beneficial as part of the strategy. I'm just going to pause while he changes the batteries. We're almost done with the presentation. And so while he's changing the batteries, that's actually a great time, because that does conclude the presentation that we have, uh, at this point. And with that, we're available for questions at this time. Thank you.
Good timing, and in one moment, we'll, uh, offer some questions. Okay, yeah, good idea. With one that, that should work. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and the update, if you will. Questions?
Question?
Yes, Mayor Beck.
I have a question. My question has to do with your outreach activities, and I'm, um, wondering if you did any outreach to landlords, um, in the area. I don't see that in your report.
We, the only outreach we've done with is with the Canal Alliance, uh, leadership. Uh, we did not reach out for the landlords, and we made a, a massive campaign to invite everyone to the forum. That's our way of reaching, uh, the landlords.
Um, would you consider a more targeted outreach, um, to the landlords to particularly inquire about the possibility of them adding capacity of them working at, um, removing car storage, of them looking at off-site options, um, to provide to their tenants?
Great suggestions. We'll follow that. We'll follow up with that.
Thank you.
Question and a comment. I'd be interested, uh, next time we talk about this, to get more information on car sharing in low-income communities. I know if you go online, there have been grants in the past, um, to look at that. There was one, I think, two years ago, just to see if there is data around that. I think it was done in San Francisco, but there might be something there, and, you know, with my green sustainability hat on, that's a conversation I'd be happy to have a part of. The other part, and this isn't a question, but it is input, so I am, uh, representative on Marin Transit. And so actually, right now, we are talking about fair adjustments. There'll be a public hearing in January, but what is being proposed, and will be discussed in January, is for low-income folks, and it's called Low-Income Fair Assistance. And for people that are eligible, either through low income, or if they're seniors, sixty-five and plus, that they will have free access across all fixed routes. We can all sit here and clap right now. Actually, so the public hearing will be in January, and that will hopefully be adopted in February. So that is a major change. Um, Marin Transit is taking our equity, uh, responsibility seriously, and that's one of the things we're looking at. In addition, the adult monthly pass will be fifty percent cheaper, from eighty dollars to forty dollars. So anyway, I saw that on there. That's already happening. So I can give you more information, but I did, I'm sure others are going to come forward with that, and I'm saying that's already in progress. That's where we are.
Whether or not this is feasible or not, but in, in conjunction with what Marin Transit might be able to answer, uh, offer, as they've done with this pilot of Marin Connect shuttle-type piece. You mentioned that getting people to park where it might not be as convenient for them because it's not as close to them, but having a, if Kerner during the evenings and the weekends is a lot of wide-open place, and, and having something that, you know, from the period of six to eight, or six to nine, as a shuttle going back and forth from there to where they can park their cars and then be shuttled back into the community where they live, and in the morning, pick up and go to their car as well. Um, I don't know, I'm just trying to think outside of the box. I mean, if there's, if there's a lot of parking in that area, and one of the barriers to them parking there is not being able to get there, or walking, or whatnot, then perhaps there's an opportunity there.
Interesting thought, and I'm, I'm thinking of, uh, I won't put anybody on the spot, but, uh, possibly. Maybe something to explore further with whistle stop, you have a number of vehicles, and, you know, whatever the timeframe might, who knows, might, or, uh, because at this point, I think we, we're encoura- speaking for myself, uh, encouraged by, uh, the progress made thus far. Certainly haven't been sitting on our hands, and, and you've demonstrated that there has been, uh, uh, some good results. Having said that, uh, I did meet with a number of the, uh, Baypoint residents Saturday, along with Dennis Rodin, and there's still quite a lot of dissatisfaction in that particular area, Spinnaker and Baypoint. So we're not quite there yet. Your ninety-three percent might further demonstrate that. Uh, so I'm, I'm curious at this point in time, in the public, there at this point in time, what specifically can we do to address that rather localized concern?
Well, the way I see it, it's a combination of measures. I'm, I, I really love what I'm hearing, the, the Zipcar or the, 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 the car sharing was not, uh, correct, was not discussed particularly. Uh, the transit subsidy is a huge deal, especially in neighborhoods of the highest need. Um, we're thinking, uh, maybe painted passenger loading zones in, in certain areas to make it easier. There are a lot of combination of measures. I think the, the long-term measures of, of improving the walking conditions and the, and the different modes of travel, and, and the, the less reliance on the vehicle, uh, are all leading in the, in the positive direction. So, uh, I think it's just going to take time, and, uh, we will come back to you, hopefully, with better numbers. Uh, we met, as we met with the, uh, homeowners associations, uh, we asked the question of, what is the goal here? What is, what is too much? Is it, can we reach eighty-five percent and call that a success, or eighty percent occupancy? Um, and the responses were, uh, a little different, but I think, I think if we get anywhere in the eighties, in the lower eighties, um, the, the theory behind the lower eighties is that every block has a parking space. So when, when that number is achieved, people can find parking, in general. And, um, I think working towards that with the combination of all measures. The, the measure of safety is something that we will gradually attend to. Uh, there, when, when a crosswalk on, uh, Kerner was mentioned, a specific crosswalk, there was a, uh, immediately positive reaction by the crowd, that this is a great thing to do. So I think we need to pay specific attention to that crosswalk. It was recently restripped. The whole area was restripped. But we're thinking of additional measures that will, uh, will be implemented. So I, I, I don't think there's a silver bullet for all this to, to immediately cause the, uh, the, the change in the Baypoint and the, uh, in the neighborhood. But, uh, I think collectively and, and incrementally, we'll get there.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Can I answer part of that question?
Yeah, please do.
Um, I think that the capacity that's been freed up from the data is really telling. In a short period of time, we've created some really significant capacity. So just to be very specific about that question, how, how do we take that ninety-three percent and get it down? Um, I think we really need to focus on c- communication, education, and incentivizing, trying to figure out how do we, how do we relocate some of those cars by looking at time limits and talking to the community about what's gon- what is it going to take? Not, I think it is going to take time, but I think we can do some things in the, in the short term that can really help spread some of that. We didn't have the capacity before. We have it now. So it's just a matter of trying to figure out what's going to be the motivating factor to move some of those cars a little bit further south.
Yeah, certainly, uh, certainly a good point.
If I may add to that briefly. I think, following up, those are all, that's exactly consistent with where we're going with this. One of the things that we heard in the meetings that we had with the Canal Alliance and with the community at large, it's easy to point fingers and say, oh, it's, it's, it's all of these extra people from the canal neighborhood who are parking in our neighborhoods. And that may be so because the canal has a lot of people and a lot of cars. But in listening to what the canal residents are telling us, they don't want to park in Baypoint and Spinnaker. That's, that's not their goal. And it was interesting because they're saying, we need options. Help us and give us options so we don't have to park there. We don't want to, these are our neighbors. We all get along. We don't want to anger them. They don't want to have to complain about us. And that was, that was very telling because it not only shows a level of cooperation, but they're saying to us, give us these options. Help us. Yes, we freed up some spaces. Keep going, and give us these other options so that we don't have to park there. And I think that's all consistent with where the strategy is heading, and, and certainly trending in the right direction. We just need to get there now.
Well, certainly, the attitude is to be applauded, but on the other hand, if we don't provide, uh, options, uh, there's nothing going to, uh, to change. I know we have many in the, or several certainly in the, uh, in the audience. I'm tempted to turn to the audience at this point, and then I've got a, a question that you're probably not going to like, but, a question. Public.
Joanne, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thanks for having me. I am pleased to report, you know, I can't see my notes and you at the same time, so. Awful, terrible. Um, I'm pleased to report that businesses located in East San Rafael are reporting that this program is working for them. So the overall number of vehicles parking has been reduced, and that has a lot to do with the fact that it's, uh, twenty-four hours now, and so all those vehicles that were staying there for days at a time have been removed. Um, we are hearing from merchants out there that, um, parkers are more compliant, so they're not playing that game of taking up a parking space and a half until somebody comes back. So they're parking within their, their Ts. Uh, it's creating more accessibility for their, their customers, which is great. Um, however, I also heard tonight, and I agree, it's not the silver bullet. We have more work to do. So, uh, we would recommend that the, uh, the time change on Kerner be twenty-four hours, so the entire thing. So remove the section that's the four hours. That will take your parking, parkment, and parkment enforcement officer, parking enforcement officer, off of Kerner and put them in the hot zones where, where it's needed. Also consider staggering the enforcement and having it go till eight P M. So if the morning hours aren't a problem, maybe they're working noon to eight instead because that after-dinner hour is really tough. Talking about incentive overnight parking on Kerner because it is farther away, and if I'm a senior or a mom with little kids and groceries, I don't want to park there. Don't hate me, but what if like they had scooters or something, you know? And they're parking out there in Kerner, and they're getting a scooter, and they're young, and they can get somewhere else? Or we work with Canal Alliance, and we have a program where, you know, you're, you're, you can put your name in the hat, and you can win an e-bike or something. I don't know. But we gotta, we gotta think outside the box to get them to, uh, park in Kerner. Um, but it's not going to change unless we increase supply, number one. So the private-public partnerships is absolutely key. You just heard that today about the, uh, the, the project in downtown. We have to work with those private, you know, underutilized lots on the weekend and at night. So however staff can prioritize that item, uh, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Glad the, uh, the business areas improved. I know that's critical for many of the business in that area. And I certainly appreciate your ideas because we are going to have to come up with some new stuff.
Absolutely.
We're not quite there yet.
Thank you. I agree.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Council members. My name is Kate Sprague, and I'm a homeowner, homeowner and resident on Sonoma Street, which is in the heart of the canal neighborhood. I have to admit that I'm first disappointed that tonight is my first chance to share with you about the report. I know they mentioned the October twenty-first meeting, although I've gotten every email and text message about the PSPs. I follow several San Rafael, um, Instagram accounts. I get all the next-door alerts about smart horn tests. Somehow I didn't receive an email about the East San Rafael, uh, parking, um, meeting, nor did anyone on the board of my HOA, of which I am also a member, and, and board member. With regard to the data in the report, I'm glad to see improvement in some areas and at some- With regard to the data in the report, I'm glad to see improvement in some areas and at some times. I would not, however, want the truth of the matter, particularly in the Canal neighborhood, to be missed by the statistic placed today. The truth of the matter is that in the Canal, the most densely populated area, little progress has been made. We have no Ts and Ls on most streets allowing the same juggling and swapping of cars by the same people. We have numerous instances of cars parked at red curbs, in front of fire hydrants, blocking crosswalks and up against stop signs. We regularly have cars parked blocking the sidewalk. While enforcement may be described as seven days a week, two evenings a week, tickets are rarely issued in those early mornings or late afternoons and evenings. Those times when drivers are leaving their neighborhoods and need to safely see around those impacted parking spots. And also those times when there are the most pedestrians, people walking home from school or coming home from work. How does that make sense for the safety of our neighborhood? Recently, when walking with my kindergartner, I was holding his hand because he had to step into the street off the sidewalk for us to walk around a truck, partially blocking the sidewalk. While watching that he was stepping safely, I walked into a handle sticking off the back of the truck and hit my head. I was on the sidewalk. That truck was not ticketed despite my call to the non-emergency police department line and with the San Rafael parking manager's confirmation that any vehicle parked so that a pedestrian is forced to walk in the street or on private property to pass should be ticketed. I believe there are few necessary next steps. Significant increase to enforcement, including evenings and weekends, love the swing shift option. Ensuring that enforcement includes all illegally parked vehicles, including those blocking sidewalks. Additional Ts and Ls on all stretches of curb where more than one vehicle would fit. And finally, prioritize steps to reduce the necessary dependence on cars. You mentioned several, but there is a beautiful new pedestrian bridge on Grand Avenue. There's even now a bicycle lane across the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge. And yet, there is no safe way for my family to bike from downtown San Rafael to our home in the Canal. In fact, we can't even take our stroller all the way down that stretch of sidewalk. Car and bus travel remain our only options. We're a one-car family despite having two little kids, my husband working in the city and me working in Mill Valley. So parking will continue to be an irreconcilable problem for us. Thank you.
And, and thanks for sharing your observations, I appreciate it, thank you.
Good evening, Dave Bonfilio, twenty-seven years on Catalina Boulevard. I want to echo what the last speaker just said. Yes, there's been improvement, but if you look at the statistics for where we live in East San Rafael, Canal, Bahia, Spinnaker, Bay Point, it has not improved. We're over ninety percent in all of those categories, and the Canal, it's over a hundred percent. I will guarantee when I go home tonight, there will be people parked in crosswalks. There will be people parked in front of fire hydrants. There will be people parked on corners. That's our reality. So yes, there is progress being made, but it's not yet there. Rafat talked about opening up Kerner, I welcome that idea. But Bellum is one hell of a dangerous street to cross at night. We've been working with Rafat on one of the crosswalks, all of them need big attention. Somebody's getting killed. I'm surprised it hasn't happened already. Now that I'm done with my parking tirade, I do want to thank the City of San Rafael. With the last P S, P S, you guys had the best information, the most consistent information. Alert Marin, Nick Salt, forget them, City of San Rafael got good information, so thank you.
And thanks for sharing that. But, but Dave, one minute. Your observation with regard to the presentation, I, I'm questioning that. Because I thought that there were declines in each of those areas.
There were, there are declines, okay. Let me, let me read you the declines in the Canal, and I'm doing weekday evenings. The declines for the Canal was a hundred and twenty-one percent to a hundred and thirteen percent.
Was that, was that shown on your?
Right.
Because I don't recall that.
Yeah, Bahia, Bahia went from a hundred and six to ninety-one. Spinnaker, Bay Point went from ninety-six to ninety-three.
Right.
So all three of those neighborhoods in the evening, and that's where the people live, is negative.
And you agree with that? Yeah, I don't recall the numbers.
It is in, in the staff report, those numbers are reported and I-
But it wasn't presented by the bar graph. Yeah, and I looked at that, I can recall those numbers, to be honest with you. Yeah, okay, I appreciate it, thanks. Anyone else?
I'm here as a resident of the Canal neighborhood.
I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself, please?
Lilian Trac, I've been living in the Canal neighborhood for sixteen years. So I'm here because I received a ticket in September for parking for more than twenty-four hours in front of my own driveway. I appealed twice already and it was denied because I was told that even though I was in front of my own driveway, that space is under the restriction of the twenty-four hour parking permit. And therefore, I needed to move my car more than a hundred feet away in order to be able to park there. Now, I don't quite understand why this applies to my driveway because it's not a parking space that is available to the general public. So it doesn't really increase the parking space for the general public. It's very rare for me to park in front of my own driveway. So during the warning period in the last year, I wasn't aware that the parking space in front of my own driveway was under this restriction. Be that as it may, I think that the municipal code should be changed so that your driveway space is not under this twenty-four hour ordinance because it doesn't seem fair to the homeowners who are there. When we talk about trying to have a workable solution to increase parking capacity, I think we should be aware that homeowners may have guests that need to be parked in that space and they can't necessarily move the car away for two hours and then come back because maybe their guests are staying with them for the holidays or, you know, if there's evacuations or whatever, and you're hosting guests who are evacuated. So I hope that, you know, you guys will look into that.
I'm, I'm curious, and I'm going to ask, it's a little bit out of order, but I'm going to ask anyway for Jim Myers, our parking superintendent, to comment. Because I thought in our discussion today about this, you said that that was, that, that homeowners are entitled to that area. So maybe I misunderstood.
You are correct, they are entitled to it, but they're still subject to the rules of the city. So for example, you parked in front of your driveway during street sweeping on a certain street in the Canal. You can't just leave your car there. The same rules apply, it is effectively your space, subject to the rules of the city. So I couldn't park there, but you must still adhere to the rules.
Seems inconsistent though, if I can park in my driveway and that's my space, why couldn't I park in front of the driveway that's also my space?
Well, I think what she's referring to is if on the public streets.
I don't understand, but it was in your driveway, was it not?
So, so this was the backup space, so I have a driveway and then there's a sidewalk and then there's a backup space that crosses into the street side. So I wasn't parked in any curbside area, so I was not blocking the sidewalk at all. I was parked on the street, but right behind my driveway.
And, and parallel with your, your driveway, is that correct?
Um, yes. Blocking my driveway, I mean, the reason I did that.
But that was the space I understood you said was, was, you know, the homeowner was entitled to it.
Yes, what I said this afternoon is she is entitled to it because it's hers and hers alone. But, but the difference is she still has to adhere to the rules of the public street.
Well, I'm questioning the rules, I guess, and this is probably not the appropriate center. I mean, if you're entitled to it, it seems to me that you wouldn't be penalized for using your entitlement. I, I was trying to apply some logic. Let's, let's deal with it later, but thank you for bringing the issue.
I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the council members.
And I'm sympathetic to your point. So we'll, let's deal with that later, it's not the right time, but let's deal with it. Didn't seem quite right to me. In any case, further comment from the public? Yes, you, you can't wait. Good evening.
Good evenings, Mayor, City Council, Ross Bishop, Spinnaker Point. I, I really just had a couple of problems with the report as presented tonight in addition to the problems that I emailed to you, to you guys beforehand. The report as presented tonight doesn't indicate the fact that it does contain a, a, a date that is ten months out before the next review, which basically would mean that the status quo based on, we would do the certain small things that have been presented here to pursue further short-term changes, but no, no evaluation of that until ten months from now. I would also point out what I think is really pretty obvious is that the, the suggested steps to be taken in the near term are going to be of minimal effect. Many of them have to do with the fact that it's going to require a culture change to get people to adopt things that you do that improve the transportation and to adopt the, the practice of, of using their bikes because they're going to drive their cars for the foreseeable future. So I think that the, the presentation makes it seem like, oh, we can do all these great things and it's going to make this difference, when I think that we know that's actually not the case. I'll also point out Rafat made reference to a, a question that he asked, which was, what would it take for this to, to settle the parking topic for? He happened to ask that of me. And his suggestion was if we could achieve eighty-five percent capacity and that would theoretically give some parking availability, would that be sufficient? And I'm like, I can't answer that way because we don't know that that's true and we don't know, A, we don't know how to achieve that. I said, what, what would achieve that is, what would cause us to feel satisfied that we've achieved where we need to be is simply the thing we've been saying all along, which is, we don't, Spinnaker Point doesn't have a parking problem. If you take us out and put it, and put us on an island, we park in our driveways and, and the streets would be basically empty. We've been given a parking problem and it's perceived to be somewhat normal now. So we're, we're, we're dealing with that. So what I would propose is, you know, the, the other problem I have with the report as presented is that it doesn't tie into the stuff that's from the previous reports because in the first study, it did mention specifically the opportunity to study parking permits. So parking permits have become this thing that we all know and it's always been suggested that this is where we need to go with this, we need to go to park. But it's kind of disappeared from our discussion and I'd like to know why that is. Now, Gary and I have had, had some comments along this line and we're going to pursue some of this, but, but nonetheless. So, so I had a thought just tonight related to this that could be a combination of this. You guys know that I've presented a partial permit program because we don't need all of our spaces in Spinnaker Point and Bay Point. We only need some of them, but currently, we have none of them at night. And that's just not fair, it's not appropriate, it isn't inconsistent with the, the character of our neighborhood and, and so on and so forth. What if we tried to achieve an eighty-five percent capacity or some version of that through a partial permit program? Rather than waiting to see if all these things might add up to some sort of change, we might ultimately evolve to this place where we finally can say, oh, look, we have eighty-five, you know, it could be years from now. What if we just did a partial permit program that implemented the designation of a certain number of spaces that would match that, that we could then use and we would have that in the meantime? Then, if things change and, and the parking permit situations evolves and stuff, why we could, we could devolve that, you know? But it would be a starting place where we could get our basic objectives satisfied, even to the smallest degree. So we might be able to do this. Now, what this would require is that the, the city, the city's going to have to explore the legal status of parking permits. You know, what is it that makes it legally accessible or not? Other cities do it and we know that for a fact. And then we're going to have to do something specific about creating specific parking districts. Different than any other geopolitical designation that we have up to this point. And we're going to, because the parking characteristics and behaviors and environments are different in these sub-areas, we've already established sub-areas of East San Rafael. They're different for a reason, so we should, we should look at those. And, and so if we do these things, we can find a way to generate permits that would at least work in this small way and get us to where we're trying to get, but just do it in a timeframe that's actually much more reasonable. So that would be my comment.
And thanks for your comments and we have had some discussions and Saturday agreed to get together in a month to hopefully address this. I'll say once and for all, that's perhaps a little optimistic. Anyone else? John?
I don't have much to add, I'm, I'm concerned, I live in homeowners association in the Canal. And we have parking spaces for people there. It seems to work sometimes, sometimes it doesn't. People have gatherings of guests and so on there. There are the issues of having many cars. There are many people that live in the Canal. There are needs for trucks are used in business and gardening and construction. We need to have places for them, that's people's livelihood. We need to have places for them. We need to open up more parking spaces in the Kerner, yes. Other places, I, I had thought, I didn't check with any of the Canal Community Alliance or other places, but I was thinking of another parking garage or something that could. I know there's spaces limited, I understand that. Other housing, it's, it's, it's a larger issue than simply parking. It's coming together residents of Spinnaker and Bay Point with the Canal proper and working together on a longer basis to address some of that issue of the parking and other issues that we need to define and, and work on. So we need mainly a coming together of the portions of the Canal to work and implement some things that will appreciate the experience of people who live in the Canal proper, but also appreciate the needs of people in Spinnaker and Bay Point. I, I really hope we can do that more and move forward to implement things that will work for everybody in that area.
Thanks, John, and I would, I would too, I'd perhaps encourage that community or the larger community, if you will, to, to address some of your, your points. We can, we can attend meetings and we can do our, you know, our thing, but sometimes it comes down to the community gathering together to work out the best solution and that's probably more effective in certain cases. So I'd encourage that. Anyone else? Anyone, yes, ma'am. Thanks again for your help, appreciate it.
And I've added an additional two minutes for interpretation.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I'm very short. Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening, everyone.
Yo dejé de ser voluntaria en Canal como por tres años, descansamos un poquito porque trabajamos demasiado.
I stopped being a volunteer at the Canal because I had to rest, I used to work too much.
If you would introduce yourself, please.
Oh, my name is Darlene Ruiz, sorry.
Didn't want to interrupt you.
Darlene Ruiz Moreno.
My name is Darlene Ruiz Moreno.
Thank you.
Estamos comenzando otra vez a trabajar con nuestro grupo de voces del Canal.
We are beginning to work again with our grupo de voces of El Canal.
Y en lo personal, yo quiero felicitar a todos porque han hecho muy buen trabajo.
And at a personal level, I would like to congratulate everyone because you have done a good job.
Por ejemplo, donde yo vivo, siempre había carros viejos estacionados que no movían.
For example, where I live, there were always these old cars that were just parked there and they wouldn't move.
Es en la calle Front.
That's on Front Street.
Pero fue algo difícil para nosotros cuando nos pusieron solamente cada cuatro horas, teníamos que mover carros.
But it was very difficult for us when it was established that it was only a four-hour limit and we had to move our cars.
Hice una petición con Canal Alliance porque trabajamos con, ayudamos a ellos también.
I made a petition through Canal Alliance because we work with them, we help them.
Pero no se pudo hacer nada.
But nothing, we were not able to do anything about it.
Nos hubiera gustado que también a nosotros por lo menos en una cuadra nos pusieran cada veinticuatro horas.
We would have liked to have that at least a block away or something like that, to, to have a twenty-four hours.
Pero a pesar de que son cada cuatro horas, estoy contenta porque hay muchos espacios ahora.
But even though it's still just four hours on Canal, I'm happy because there are many spaces now.
El sábado pasado llegaron dos camiones de mudanza.
Last Saturday, there were two moving trucks.
Y no se han movido hasta hoy.
And they have not moved until now.
¿Qué pasa con ellos? ¿No les ponen tickets o?
What's happening with that? Don't you give them a ticket? Please continue then.
Y bueno, eso es en la parte de la calle Front Street.
So that's about Front Street?
Tenemos problemas también de lo que estaban comentando, que las personas, como lo estaban diciendo los señores, que apartan espacios.
Like they were saying, there were comments made about the fact that there are people that save spaces, like they mentioned.
Tenemos que, nosotros como voluntarios tenemos que trabajar mucho con nuestra comunidad.
We, as volunteers, we have to work a lot with our community.
La mayor parte de familias son de Guatemala.
Most of the families are from Guatemala.
Y es un poco difícil para nosotros tratar de educarlos.
And it's a little bit difficult for us to try to educate them.
Pero estamos en el proceso y con ustedes y con los señores que nos han ayudado, pues estamos viendo el cambio y esperemos que sea para mejor.
But we are in the process and with you and the people who have been helping us, we are in the process and we hope to do it in the best possible way.
Bueno, pues quiero darle las gracias a todos ustedes por el tiempo que se están tomando para este problema tan grande del parking.
And I want to thank you for the time that you're taking in order to deal with this big problem that is parking.
Y yo les pido a los vecinos de Spinnaker y Bay Point, mil disculpas porque estamos usando sus calles y damos mal aspecto a veces.
And I want to say I'm sorry to the neighbors on Spinnaker and Bay Point because we are taking their spaces and sometimes it doesn't look good on us.
Les agradezco a todos, de verdad, a todo el público que está aquí. Muchas gracias.
I thank you everyone truly and to all the people that are here, so thank you very much.
And thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Soy muy feliz aquí en San Rafael. Muchas gracias a todos.
I am very happy here in San Rafael. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for joining us this evening. Anyone, excuse me, anyone else? And come back for further comments or questions. And I have one that I'd like to, and I, well, I've got one. It came out Saturday and it just sort of came to mind. That is, there's quite a lot of concern about, and it seems to be rightly so, quite a lot of concern expressed by those from Bay Point and Spinnaker with regard to trucks that are sometimes larger than pickup trucks, in other words, whatever the next size up is. And there's particularly concern about those trucks and the, quite frankly, the appearance that they create within the community. So I wonder if there's anything we can do about, quote, trucks loaded with stuff or whatever.
So the laws are for the city, if a truck needs a certain dimension, it is in violation. That dimension is, I believe, eight feet, eight feet tall, seven feet wide, or twenty-two feet in length. Any one of those three, or a truck that's, what, ten thousand pounds gross vehicle weight? It weighs more than ten thousand pounds, I'd like. Those are current violations, those we write. The officers go out there, the other day I talked to a resident who was very upset. We measured his truck, it was about eight and a half feet tall. You got a ticket. That came about when we informed, did the RV ordinance, was around that same time. That sometimes includes the load. So for example, if a truck has ten feet, or the pallets on a truck on a small pickup, it would be in violation in my mind. So those rules we do enforce, and I know we enforce those regularly.
And I don't know if those configurations size, if you will, is what we wish to restrict. We might consider bringing that back for discussion. Not now, it wouldn't be appropriate, I don't think, but for consideration. I've got one that I've been somewhat reluctant to ask, but it seems like this might be the time. I've been to Spinnaker and Bay Point now for the last couple of years, talking with the individuals, the homeowners there that meet. And this issue of permit always comes up. I don't know how pervasive it is, with all due respect, but it nevertheless comes up. I've been, I've been resistant to that program because I've said that within the community, these are streets, they're public streets, and therefore should be made available to all of those within the community. References made to certain permit programs, be they San Francisco, Berkeley, maybe down in, I don't know, Hermosa Beach or some such area. Maybe it's Huntington Beach, one of those. So I know that there are permit programs, and we even have a provision, I think, that provides for that under certain circumstances. So I guess I'm wondering at this point in time to clear the air, once, perhaps once and for all, if we should explore whether or not permit programs, as suggested, because I think this is different than Berkeley where you have outside individuals coming, absorbing the parking and then leaving, rather than in a community and then parking that community. So I think it's indifferent, but I'm not an expert on it by any means, and I would suggest that perhaps none of us are. So at some point in time, I don't know if you want to commit now, but at some point in time, I'd like to address this issue once and for all.
I would love to shed some light on this issue. I mean, let me start by, just from an aerial view. This is a community all residential, and we have an imbalance between supply and demand. The, all of the suggestions that were getting thumbs up throughout all of the discussions, anything affecting the demand. On the contrary, the permit affects the supply and actually reduces it. So unless we affect the demand, we are just moving and shifting the problem. We are hearing from Bay Point and Spinnaker today, we will, if we are to engage in a permit, it will, we will start hearing from other areas, because it's just going to expand somehow. I was instrumental in getting approved almost sixteen areas for permit parking. In every instance, it was a different use other than residential affecting the area. So all of the Berkeley, San Francisco, even in Walnut Creek, the permits dealt with an impact of retail or commercial activities that affected the residential. In this case, we're dealing with a residential versus residential. It's a huge challenge to do something that would be socially fair. And that's why since the beginning, the recommendation in the report for consideration of a permit is going to be an area-wide permit. Eventually, no matter how we permit it, no matter how we slice the pie, we are affecting the supply and we're pinning a neighborhood against another. And that is the main reason why we're trying to have many different options that will incrementally fix the issue. I mean, we're not even talking about small items here. I think that the bridge that recently opened, East Francisco is funded, the sidewalk is funded. Connectivity and continuing to study the multimodal impact is the key solution. It's, if we are to engage in a permit, it's going to be a temporary fix where we're going to start shifting and dealing with the problems elsewhere. That's, that is staff's position.
And I appreciate your comment, and again, it's perhaps not fully described in our agenda this evening, so I want to limit the conversation some. But it does strike me, and I'd be curious, fellow council members, whether or not we should put this on the table, and frankly, I'm not in favor. From what I know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing an element that would change my mind. But nevertheless, the community has expressed an interest in this area, and so I'm wondering if we should address it in a more focused fashion than we have thus far. Thank you for your input, don't get me wrong. But it, it does seem to me that it's time to fish or cut bait with regard to permit programs. But that's just my sense, and again, I'm far from an expert on this, but I am curious. I am, I am concerned, quite frankly, that if we put this in place, just a concern, not an observation or knowledgeable statement, that would be discriminatory, and I'm not into that. If we are providing parking in public streets that's not available to others within the, I'll say, the proximity, then to me that doesn't feel right. But again, I'm willing to at least address the issue, and I'd be interested in it, counsel.
Yeah, just briefly, thanks for the report. I think what we do here is going to be something that we're going to have to look at on a, not just focusing on this one area, because in Terre Linda, where I live, the problem has increased quite a bit over the last four or five years. Maybe not, obviously, to the extent that we see it in the canal neighborhoods. But I notice is, over the last four or five years, as I drive throughout the Terre Linda neighborhoods, as the economy has picked up and folks are, a lot more folks are working, there are multiple cars per resident, and we have multifamily units right next to single-family units in Terre Linda. And the streets, trying to find a parking spot on the streets, for example, next to Vallecito School where we use the sports fields. You cannot find a parking spot on the streets there. On my street, going up Professional Center Parkway where there's a number of, I see the same things that I hear from where this kind of parking rodeo, where I see people driving other people down to their cars further on the street, getting people out, going out, and then picking somebody up and parking their car somewhere down the street, because there's not enough parking in the apartment complexes that are there. So this is not an issue that is unique to, it might be more impacted right now, but this is an issue that is spreading out throughout the city. To your point about parking permits, I'd be interested to understand how the other cities that are implementing them get past that, what might be perceived as a discriminatory practice. Because if they're out there now and permits are being used in cities, someone's obviously brought that up to address those situations. And whether or not it's valid or not, it'd be interesting to know if they've, you know, the classic example of San Francisco, they've had permits for a long time, residential parking permits for a long time. And, you know, do they have claims of discrimination on who's able to park and whatnot? Because like it or not, we are not a, a city with very, with connectivity when it comes to, with connectivity when it comes to other modes of transportation. We're talking about, yes, the bridge over, you know, the canal was just finished, and we're talking about expanding the multi-use path, and we're talking about expanding the sidewalks in the canal. That's all fine, but I think we talked about it at our last meeting, or somebody from our last meeting spoke up. We're not necessarily going to change behavior in a suburban environment where we are, where people use their cars. If we think that automatically people are going to get out of their cars and get on a bike to go somewhere, it's, I don't see it happening in my lifetime. I mean, I might be the lone person sees that, but I think that we are going to have a lot of cars in our neighborhoods for a long time. So while it might be an admirable position to take that these, you know, make it more accessible, people are going to get out of their car to get on a bike to go to work, I don't think it's realistic to think that's going to happen. So we're going to have to address this either with more capacity of parking, and that might mean parking structures, parking garages, parking areas on city-owned properties, and see where we can go from there, because I don't think we're going to, I don't think that the way that people are getting around is going to change that much to reduce the issues that we have right now. And again, it's going to be a citywide issue. It's not just going to be localized to, so whatever we do, we might pilot it somewhere, but it's going to have to expand citywide.
Let me take you right, I think you're coming. Kate?
Yeah, no, I'll just add on. I think Councilmember Gamblin's accurate. I know we have a similar issue out at Smith Ranch Road. Had a long conversation with folks out there, people spilling over from the developments, so it isn't just one area. I did have a question that, as you were talking, reminded me that we had a member of the public that talked about Ts and Ls not painted throughout the area. Could you speak to that?
Yes, our plan is to continue to add where we see a demand. The problem with the designation of a parking space, it reduces the number of available spaces. So with Ts and Ls, you, someone would be ticketed if they park outside of those Ts and Ls. But now they can stretch it, they can, small cars, big cars, and they can play that. There's a, there's some capacity that is recognized without them. That's why we were strategic about putting them in, and we're working very closely. We continue to put them in, you know, we probably add about, you know, three or four locations a month since we started. But it does reduce the capacity of.
Yeah, no, and that makes sense, and I was also concerned about folks that are blocking the red zones. I mean, that, there's disability sight lines there, but I know that's an enforcement issue.
It is.
Yeah, I think one of the other comments we got was pursuing the public-private parking lots, and we've talked about that since the beginning, so I would love to hear more on that and getting creative, especially if their lots are used during the day and we have the need at night. And maybe that's where we start to look at some of the bigger trucks or something else, but that is something I would like to see more on, because that does, to John's point, build some capacity, you know.
Yeah, two points. Farrah?
I have a question. I know we have a downtown parking district, and I guess I'm looking at you, Jim. How does that work and how did that come to be? Does that require a vote to have a parking district? Yeah, the downtown one.
I don't recall, it was, I don't know how it was formed or required a vote. I can do some research to get back to you, but I.
Okay, so, but it exists, so we know such a thing can be had through some process. Is it, is it time for a parking district there? Is that something that might make sense as a way to raise funds to pay for some of these things that, that the area seems to need?
Well, who's paying for it?
We pay for it, but don't they, no.
I just wanted to make sure I understand the question. So do you mean like a business improvement district? Or do you mean like meters in order to?
Of a way to get the landowners in that area involved in creating more parking. That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I think that there's.
It sounds like that's not a good idea.
I think there's a variety of ways to do that. The ways that have been suggested have been talking to landlords or talking to property owners and finding out who might be willing to do that. In the past, I've had conversations with Jim Myers about, could we provide security or could we provide the person who collects the funds or something like that to facilitate? Or is there some public-private partnership there? The one I think you're mentioning is, can we set up an assessment district or some way to raise revenues to do it? I think we should be looking at all of those things.
Do you have a canal or a situation there?
Okay.
Anyway.
All right, thank you. That was, that was my question. Are we at comments yet? My comments are, clearly we need more enforcement. The area's asking, and that's, that's something we can do right away, and that will help everything. As for permits, my question about permits, if we did it the entire area-wide, how would we control the number that were issued to an apartment, to a landlord?
The way I've seen it done, you limit the number of residential parking. There are different permits. There are residential permit parking that is associated with the owner of the vehicle and to the person making verification of residency. Each eligible residence is, would be made, would be provided or have the option to purchase. Two residential parking, basically for two cars, and guest parking. If someone has visitors, they would hang, they would be handed that parking pass for each residence.
But what if, what if ten people live at an address?
That doesn't solve the problem. If we have, I mean, we can't, we have to limit the number of permits.
So if ten people live at an address, there's only two permits given out to that address? That would be your vision?
That, that's how I've seen it done. But the, the number of permits is a way to control, you know, eligibility to get permits is. eligibility to get permits is whoever lives there, in, in the whole area. So, and it'll be up to us to, uh, to determine how many permits per residence, per legal residence. So.
Okay.
Uh, briefly, um, you know, this question came up during the, uh, original parking study. As part of the, we had short-term and midterm and longer-term solutions. We're currently in the, in that short-term phase and moving towards middle-term. In the middle-term, when we talk about permit parking, how that would work, and the number of permits, there'd be about, for the entire East Centerfell area, approximately two thousand permits, which is equivalent to about eighty-five percent of the on-street spaces. And we actually came up with a table that would show how those would be distributed in each of the sub-areas based on the number of units and then also the eligibility. Part of the issue we will face in, in this situation is the eligibility does require having, um, a registered car and an address, um, in the area. That might not always be the case. Um, and so the, but the distribution of that was kind of thought through, including how that would work and the, the administrative issues that go with that, and that's in the, the May twenty-seventh team report.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sounds like you might have an interest in, in pursuing this. You might have an interest in at least considering pro- pros and cons. We don't, yeah.
Yeah, Mark, since you're, have referred us back to the original report, um, there was a data point in there that indicated, uh, based upon the survey work that was done, the number of cars that at the time you or in combination city staff felt were being, um, stored. What was that number, you recall, within the entire area?
I don't recall. It was, it was definitely in the hundreds, and we were, we were short about six hundred on-street spaces. How many of those were being stored or being used for other purposes, it wasn't clear. It was clear there was a lot, though. I mean, our observations clearly indicated there were a lot of cars that just were not being moved, and a lot that were just being shuffled. So we wanted to address that right off the bat, because we felt that was something that we could do. And I think we've made, I don't know that we've gotten all of them yet, but I know we've made quite a bit of headway in that particular area. Um, but it was definitely well into the hundreds.
So, assuming you're right, and that we've made, while we've made significant headway, there are still cars that are being stored that really don't otherwise serve up an important day-to-day purpose for the residents who own them. Going back to your point, Rafat, and this is a long way of saying I'm also interested in exploring a permit program that's non-discriminatory. Um, you're right, I, I really appreciated your analysis, and I think you're right on. Other than the fact that supply isn't quite as constrained in a permit program as it might otherwise be, if some of the cars, if some of the demand is demand that will go away or should go away if we put in place a program that's somewhat rigorous and designed to eliminate people who are storing cars, and then, of course, others who are forced to disperse their vehicles, uh, because they don't have enough permits possibly, will move them into those areas where we know we have additional capacity, further south on Corner, for example. So going back to the permit program, you know, we've challenged you, Ross, over the years, the last couple of years, to come up with a non-discriminatory program, and you, in my view, haven't, but you've come up with interesting ideas towards a program. Um, you know, I have, and others maybe have referred you to the Attorney General opinion that says you can't pit single-family homes against multifamily homes when designing a parking permit program. I think we can avoid that problem if we do an area-wide program such as Rafat discussed, but then you have the can of worms of, you know, the social equity issues and how do you determine residency and number of cars, and how many should be accorded to a given residence. But I think with enough exploration, we might be able to come up with a program that's interesting. We would need a significant take rate within the Spinnaker and Canal neighborhoods, too, to make it financially viable, so that would be something that we would have to build in the program as well. It wouldn't be fair if everybody in the canal had to get a permit, but nobody in Baypoint and Spinnaker did, because they felt they didn't need the spaces on their streets. That really flies in the face of what you've been telling us for the last three years. We need spaces in front of our homes. We would expect you to get those permits as well. But I'm interested in pursuing this, and I've said that to a number of people over the last several months.
Well, before we go into the motion, uh, I would like to suggest that it seems to me that there's quite a bit of interest in, in at least being, coming more knowledgeable, uh, with regard to the permit program, uh, all of the factors that were discussed here. So I would, uh, I would respectfully request that, uh, that such a program be considered. There are various types, I'm sure, various configurations, but consider them and, and bring it back for our further, uh, edification and, and ultimately a decision as to whether or not we wanna go in this direction, uh, if that makes sense to you. Okay. With that, um, any further, anything further with regarding the agenda items?
Uh, just to, in, in addition to bringing back information on a permit program, um, to also, um, have additional outreach to landlords as well as increased enforcement.
Good point, okay. And is that a motion?
Yes.
Sounds like, is there a second to the motion?
It, it includes accepting the report, somewhere in that motion, that I second it.
Thank you so much. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Cullen.
Hi.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Hi.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
I am.
Mayor Phillips.
Hi, I'm Editor Curie, it's, uh, five zero. Thanks, everyone, and we'll move on now to your end financial. Nadine. Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. Nadine, we always do this to you. I don't know, you know? Y'all are welcome to stay. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So, we still have some folks here, so that's a good sign. I'm here to share the fiscal year eighteen nineteen audit results with you, which have also been discussed and reviewed by the Finance Committee. Note that we normally bring forth the single audit results during this time, but due to scheduling conflicts, we won't be doing that, and the report is scheduled for completion in December, so I'll be bringing that back to you separately. Before jumping into the key highlights of the audit, I'd like to thank our finance team for their focus and dedication in completing these audits, uh, specifically Von Bach and Sean Plate, the other departments that cross-collaborated with us, and our auditors, Mason Associates, for honoring our timeline, which is quite tight, and completing a thorough audit of all of our funds. So, it was a lot of work and a great team effort. A few highlights. The city's total net position increased by sixteen point five million in fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen. This is largely due to an increase in capital assets due to construction activity. Additionally, the city's pension liability decreased by about ten million dollars from prior year, and the city's OPEB liability also decreased by about seven hundred K. The general fund increased by approximately three hundred and ten thousand in the current year. This is different from the number that I brought to you in, on July fifteenth, when we projected an estimated amount, which was nine hundred and fifty thousand before using one-time money. It was a loss of nine hundred and fifty thousand, so we had quite a windfall, and this was mainly due to an unexpected increase in sales tax, which was attributed to a large purchase of, uh, a fleet of buses, as well as unexpected gains from construction and building. We don't expect to see those going forward. But I will say that the Wayfair decision has actually brought in a little bit of money as well, approximately a hundred and fifty thousand, and that will be ongoing. Consistent with prior years, we were able to fund the operating emergency reserve at the city's target goal. However, significant challenges still do exist with our infrastructure and rising income inequality, so we're still working through those issues. As of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, we have approximately one point one million dollars in unassigned fund balance. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Catherine Yun from Mason Associates, who will go over the auditor's perspective and results.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is gonna be as exciting as the building code amendments, just to let you know.
They had some fun facts.
Exactly. I don't have as much fun facts, though. Um, okay, so thank you for having me. First of all, thank you for your direction during the year for the audit, and then, um, Finance Department, City Manager also have helped us, um, tremendously this year. Oh, thank you. So, um, I only have about six slides, so it's gonna be quick. A couple of, um, background information. We are independent auditor, which means that we were appointed by the council to, uh, take an independent look at the financial statements, uh, and the financial data that was prepared by management. Uh, this year, we spent about four weeks, uh, at the city hall, two weeks at, um, in interim. That, at that time, what we look at is the internal controls of, uh, the department, of the, of the city in general. What we want to see is that, um, the person that, the employee that has access to the actual access that, uh, cannot also alter the records. So that's what we are looking at. Um, and then we, um, verify the claims by the department. So if they say that they cannot do this, we wanna make sure they really cannot do that, stuff like that. Then, um, in September, we came back after the management has prepared the financial statements, and then we take a look at it, we verify it through, um, third-party confirmations, we test some balances, and stuff like that. We follow the auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, which is, um, the audit standards that auditors in the United States follow, and we also follow the government at, um, auditing standards, which have some extra steps that we need to look into. Um, so that mostly applies to, um, uh, when we have a grant audit. The grantor usually require us to look at more of the internal control side of things. So there's no major accounting pronouncement this year. So, last year we had, um, two years ago, you im- early implemented, uh, GASP seventy-five for the other post-employment benefits. Um, then this year, there's not really anything exciting and new on the financial statements. The audit results is that the city received an unmodified opinion for the financial statements and also the, uh, child development program audit. So what that means is that it's a clean opinion. And also we, uh, recalculated the appropriation limits, and we did not have any exception. In conjunction with the, uh, audit opinion, we also issued this other report that is called the Memorandum on Internal Control. That is a report that, uh, we like to, if there, we find any control deficiencies that we would like to, uh, report to you, we put it on that report. So management has no, uh, control over what we put in there. A control deficiency, what that means is that, um, during the course of the audit, we look at the design of the oper- and the operation of the city. If we feel that the design or the operation do not allow employees and management during normal course of business to detect misstatements of the financial statements, then it's a control deficiencies. Um, so if we find any that is warrant the attention of the council, we will put it on this document called the Memorandum on Internal Control. This year, uh, we are happy to, to report that we did not note any that, that warrant your attention, so we did not put any on the Memorandum on Internal Control. That was it. Do you have any question I can answer?
Excellent. Questions? Public? Back? Anything further to add before we accept the report, in which case, is there a motion to do so?
Uh, I would move that we accept the report and, and thank, and her team.
That's, that's an appropriate second.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Cullen.
Hi.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Hi.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
I.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm Editor Curie, it's five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're getting close. SEI, getting there. The SEIU local, uh, ten twenty-one.
Over here, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. Christina Lilovich with my HR hat on. Um, this is the second reading of the SEIU Child Care Successor MOU. It was originally presented for public comment and discussion on November the fourth. The key terms of the agreement are a two percent base wage increase with a two thousand dollar one-time non-pensionable payment for a two-year term, which includes bilingual pay and two floating holidays for the childcare unit. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions? Public? None? Back? Motion would be appropriate. John, come on, you can go. It's just to adopt the resolution.
Uh, I would move that we adopt the resolution and commendations, um, to the negotiators on both sides. This has been, um, much awaited, and, uh, there was considerable communications that we heard from the stakeholders, and I'm gratified, and I know I'm speaking on behalf of everyone else here, gratified that we could finally reach this, uh, or bring this to a satisfactory conclusion, so with that, I make my motion.
Glad you added that, uh, point. Is there a second to it?
Second.
Yeah, thank you very much. Second and roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Cullen.
Hi.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Hi.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
I.
Ma- Mayor Phillips.
I'm Editor Curie, it's five zero, moving on to the Third Street Rehab.
Uh, I'll be very brief, I'm just, we're going back into close session, please. Uh, Bill Guern with Public Works, uh, we have a, uh, uh, funding from TAM to do a project on Third Street. I've presented that project in the past to you. Uh, we are breaking it into two pieces. Uh, one is, uh, local funding, and one has some additional, uh, federal funding in it, so we're breaking this project into two pieces. I presented in the past that our intention was to go from Lindaro to the west with, uh, one contractor. Uh, we're, uh, in a position to award that contract to CSW. Uh, they, uh, were evaluated with, uh, two other firms and deemed to be the most appropriate, uh, designer for this project. They're gonna do the environmental work for the entire stretch, as well as the design from Lindaro to the, uh, west Miracle Mile. Uh, the project total budget, uh, for design is nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, uh, seven.
Seven eighty-two.
Eighty-two dollars, uh, and we're looking for you to approve the resolution to move that design forward.
And thanks for bringing it to us. Uh, questions? Public? Bill?
Yeah, it's quickly, uh, realizing the hour here. Um, I've, you know, this is the beginning of, of a design development process, so I've taken that opportunity to, uh, suggest a few things that we'd like to see covered in that. I have good faith that, uh, Bill Guern will carry that forth. Um, the one thing I would like to emphasize, um, is the Lindaro third intersection. And, you know, we've got a very, uh, stunning design, really, from BioMarin and Whistlestop. Uh, and one of those features is a major pedestrian, uh, route along the, the west side of Lindaro Street and on their property and on the public right-of-way. Uh, that dead ends at Third, and you can't cross, right? There's no crosswalk on the west side of that intersection. To me, that's, uh, to us, that's essential, that there be a crosswalk. There's gonna be a major pedestrian pressure-desire line going up that side from the campus up to Fourth Street. So we need to accommodate that, and this seems an opportunity with a designer on board to really take a close look at how that can be accomplished.
Thanks, Bill.
I'll end it there. Thanks.
Any, any possibility of doing so?
Yes, we intend to study that as part of this project.
Are you? Okay, good. Anyone else from the public? In which case, we'll close and come back. Um, any other questions, points, in which case, a motion would be appropriate.
Move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Move a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Cullen.
Hi.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Hi.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
I.
Mayor Phillips.
I, and that, Editor Curie, is five zero as well. Councilmember reports, future agenda items?
Very quickly, I already gave you the big part of the Marin Transit report earlier today, and then the other part today, Marin Transit approved the purchase of a site where they will be able to store buses, uh, sites up towards Novato, and that's huge, because when we go and renegotiate contracts with providers, uh, that is a big advantage. Um, and there's lots of other good things that happened. Anyway, so that's what happened today.
Cool. John, I think you answered.
Um, yeah, just, as a, as a potential future agenda item, we discussed, I think, six months ago with the, the cigarette and vaping piece, and we were put out there that we were gonna have, I think it was eighteen months, to allow for state and federal government to do things before our ban would be enacted. And I was just wondering if we, with all the newer information that we've had over the last, you know, month or so, with people dying and, and whatnot, if maybe we could give an update prior to waiting another eighteen months to see if we might want to, um, revisit that.
And you are aware that, uh, Trump is backing off on it?
I, 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 one of the reasons that I wanted to hear, you know, what others are doing, um, you know, on the, on the state and federal level, so rather than waiting if no one else is disagreeing with that, just get an update.
Yeah, I'll hear, hear. Absolutely. Uh, I'm ever.
Just a quick one. Um, CMSA in cooperation, uh, with, um, Marin Airporter is, um, uh, with a contract with Marin Airporter to allow them to park their buses, um, in. a contract with Marin Airporter to allow them to park their buses, um, in, at night, um, in our construction yard on, uh, at CMSA. So, it's a.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yep. Very good, uh, public-private program, um, using surplus property to benefit the business.
There you go. Nadine, I'll just mention, I think perhaps you know, SMART, we're in the Phase Two, which is now running the trains, uh, after, well, running the trains to Larkford. The test program now is the entire span, so it's changed from what it was before. And significantly, uh, the, the test, uh, period, the time of day, is normal operations. So, it's not at three o'clock in the morning. So, that testing will take place. And, uh, it's going pretty well thus far. Still expect, uh, the train service, passenger service to, uh, start before the end of the year. And, and I think that Jim is very much in tune with keeping it in the quiet zone and the start in sync. And that's more difficult than it might otherwise sound. But thanks for overseeing that, and hopefully we'll get, get those two in sync. And with that, I would like to close, uh, tonight's meeting with respect to Gary.